It is now six o'clock and I will call to order the June twenty-sixth meeting of the Concord Board, the Concord Select Board, and ask Mary to please call the roll.
Linda Escobedo.
Present if I unmute. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Mark Howell.
Present.
Henry Dane.
Present.
Myself, Mary Hartman. I do not see Terry, but if she comes on later, I'll recognize her.
Okay, well, let's just, we can proceed with the, well.
Public comment.
Public comments. Wait, oh, well.
I just, I understand that the public comment initial period is for things not on the agenda.
That's right.
But just as a protocol item, you have a consent agenda item to put people's names up for a role, and the charge has not yet been approved or agreed to. So it seems a little out of order to be putting people up for a role that hasn't even been established yet. So that's my only initial comment. I do have comments on the Solar Task Force when you get there.
Okay.
Are you talking about the appointments to the Solar Task Force?
Yes, they're in the, they're in the, they're in the consent agenda, but the Solar Task Force hasn't been established, so it seems a little out of order.
Maybe we could endure a little bit suspense and ambiguity and waiting for the charge to be approved. And if we, should we make the appointments subject to the approving?
Well, these aren't appointments, these are nominations. So the appointments are in suspense anyway.
Anyway, right.
Okay, all right. Sorry for the
No, no.
interruption. It just felt like
At least it was brief.
You were putting the cart before the horse was the way it was.
At least it was brief. Carolyn.
Carolyn Reed eighty-three with send. Do we know when the 2022 Town Annual Report will be posted online? Right now, there's a placeholder saying that it'll be coming up in May of 2023, and that's already passed. Yeah.
I will have to get back to the board. Donna McIntosh, our Communications Manager, is working on that. She's, she's on vacation this week, and I neglected to ask her about that before she left last week. So I can provide an update to you in writing next week when she returns.
Okay, any, any other public comment?
I can have some, Mr. Dane, if I can jump in.
Is that Paul McCone?
Yes.
Yes, Paul, you'll have two minutes to enlighten us.
Thank you. Actually, I have four questions, Mr. Dane, and I don't know if you have time to answer all them, but I'd like to just put them before the board. The first question is, has the Chief Financial Officer, Gail Dowd, submitted her notice of resignation? And if so, when is her last day? That's the first question. The second question is, now that John Harris has retired and Brandon Roberts has submitted his notice of resignation, who is going to do the budgeting and purchasing functions for the town? That's question number two. Number three is, I wonder if you have an understanding that the town was going to go online with the cut over to the Munis financial system as of July first? And with the present staffing or lack of staff in the Finance Department, is this implementation of this long-planned Munis system on track? And who was the point person on the project? That's number three. And lastly, it appears an approximate $515,000 deficit was carried over to the new 24 budget. And what is the origin of this deficit? And what I mean by origin, I, I am aware of the discussion at the April twenty-seventh FinCon meeting regarding that $515,000 being carried over. But what is the genesis of it? Was it an accounting error originally? Was it the overspending of a line item? Or what? Those are my four questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the premise of the public comment period was not to have questions and answers. Those are, I don't know how do we deal with this when people have questions that, which they ask, for which they want a response, without kind of violating the basic principle of public comment not being a question and answer in a debate format.
Sure. So what I would suggest is I'm happy to follow up directly with Mr. McCone. I think most of the issues that he raised are not, they're operational, they're not items that are in front of the board or for any board action. With respect to the issue of the budget, we had significant discussion both at this board and the Finance Committee prior to annual town meeting. And again, I'm, I'm happy to follow up directly with him to, to have some discussion about his questions.
Thank you. Paul, why don't you maybe take those questions and put them in the, in an email and send them to the town manager so she has, knows exactly what she's being asked to respond to?
Sure. I have, I have no problem with that, and I'll, I'll CC all the members of the board so that everybody can be on the same page.
Thank you. I see that Terry has joined us.
Yes, thank you. Technical problem, sorry.
That's one of the best kind to have. Right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Are there any other public comments?
I didn't, well, I
I didn't see any.
No, I don't see any either.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not going to ring them out of people.
Okay, great. I noticed a lot of people had joined just as, as that was going on, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's roll call. Because Linda Escobedo?
Aye.
Terry Ackerman?
Aye.
Mark Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay, thank you. And we can move on to the Town Managers' Report.
No, actually, we have committee appointments.
We have committee appointments first?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I've got to read some. Okay. Move to appoint Sue LaChance of Eighteenth Studley Court for a term to expire May thirty-first, 2026, to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee. Take them out. Move to reappoint Ramon Carrion of Twenty-four Malden Street, Mark Martinez of Sixty-six Alfred Circle, Jim McGonigal of Thirty-one Highland Street, Stephen Verrell of Four Fifteen Wheeler Road, and Beth Williams, Economic Vitality and Tourism Manager, for terms to expire May thirty-one, 2026, to the Economic Vitality Committee. Move to approve the Town Manager appointment of Nancy Felisa Lee, hope I said that right. Sorry, excuse me if I didn't, of One Forty Walden Street for a term to expire May thirty-one, 2026, as a full member to the Historical Commission.
Seconds.
Roll call vote. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay.
Now it's time to
Now, now are we ready for the Town Managers' Report?
We are.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and good evening. There are actually two reports that are in the packet this evening, and, and I will go through those quickly. We had our first official Juneteenth celebration on June nineteenth. The morning started with a flag-raising ceremony that I think was very well-attended. I think next year, we might want to look at shutting down the, the Monument Square area just for a short period of time while we raise the flag. It was very difficult to hear speakers. And it was, it was such a nice ceremony that it would be nice to have a little bit of peace while we were doing that. But there were several other events that happened on Juneteenth at the museum, at the Robbins House, and at the Visitor Center, and they were all very well-attended. So we appreciate everybody's participation there. In the report, the first report of the week of June sixteenth, there's an awful lot of information about activities at the library, and I would encourage you to, to take a look at that when you have a chance. Just really, a lot of nice things that are happening for the community at the library. I do want to mention that this Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we will have our kickoff community meeting for the MBTA Community Zoning. It will be at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center and also available through hybrid or through remote participation. At the meeting, we will be joined by a representative of CHAPA for an introductory overview to the MBTA zoning law, including why it was passed, what it involves, and what it might look like if implemented here in Concord. We will also get an overview from our GIS mapping and zoning consultants, who will provide information on how the compliance modeling is done and background on our starting place and prepare people for, again, what this might look at, look like. Our Natural Resources Commission received six new applications for notice of intents for properties at One Sixty-six Commonwealth Ave, for a boat launch at Ninety-B Walden Street, for tree removal, invasive species removal, and installation of a fence at Eighty-eight Hugh Cargill Road, for construction of a new home at Seventy-six Bruce Road, and then two requests for determination of applicability for the replacement of a shed at Thirty-six Lawsbuck Road, and for temporary construction access at Three-Eleven Garfield Road. Let's see, our Visitor Center is welcoming the New England Association of History Educators to Concord for two-day-long visits. We have twenty-three Concord children who will be attending camp this summer with the help of a campership or a camp scholarship provided by the Silent Fund and the Community Chest. This financial support allows families who might not otherwise be able to send their children to camp the opportunity to do so, so that's, that's very important. I also want to mention and thank the collaborative effort between our Recreation Department, School Administration, and MOC, the service provider at the shelter. Through, through this collaborative effort, we have been able to register all of the school-aged children that are residing at the shelter into our summer camp program. And we've been able to do that free of charge. And I should also mention that we've, the collaborative effort has extended beyond that group. We had a couple of residents who practiced at Emerson Hospital, make a special visit over to the shelter to provide physicals for all of the students who will be attending, and we had a special vaccination clinic for any of the students there that needed to have vaccinations in order to attend the camp. We've also been able to provide an employment opportunity for two of the high-school-age students that are residing at the shelter, so they will be working for the Rec Department at the camp, and specifically will be able to help us with language. So we have, we have some need for assistance there. And then, just to mention that our Director of Sustainability, Eric Sims, provided testimony in front of the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. He testified on House 2038, an act to prohibit the expansion of fossil-fuel infrastructure for new construction within the town of Concord. We had a nice event at the Council on Aging where Louisa and May Alcott visited and had a discussion about their sisterly relationship, which apparently was very well-received, and I was disappointed not to know about that ahead of time. I also was, was able to go over to the COA last week. They had their volunteer reception, and they served mocktails. So we took note that maybe for our volunteer reception next year, we would like to hire their bartender for mocktails, because it was, it was about as well-attended as our event, and they have a smaller base of volunteers. In our Police Department, we had an officer Samantha Simpson graduate from the Fifth Recruit Class at the Cambridge Northeastern Police Academy, and she was sworn in to service by our town clerk and has begun her twelve-week field training with, with her assigned field-training officer. Sergeant Luke Rennie completed a week-long Supervisory Leadership Institute training at the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. Two of our detectives, Cara Palladino and Derek Rodriguez, conducted Alice Training at the Hunt Gym for the Rec Department. That's something that's done on an annual basis. Detective Keith Harrington attended the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. There are some other people, their training is listed as well. On the fire side, we've begun the annual water rescue training at White Pond, and firefighter Paul Armin graduated from the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. I mentioned these things, and we include them in the report because it's important for the community to know the level of training that is conducted by members of both the police and fire personnel. I think it's, it's important. There's, there's a lot that goes into each of those jobs, and it's, I think it's important to know. And I will end with the Willard Day of Service. We had twenty-two fifth graders who participated in a two-and-a-half-hour volunteer project along a path leading to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. Carrie, can you give us an update on what's happening with the BD pools?
Yeah, so as of last week, we had, two, two of the four pools were filled, and the other two were on their way to being filled, so the two shallower pools had been filled, and we finally did not have an issue with the combined chlorine. So at the twenty-four-hour and forty-eight-hour testing periods, the combined chlorine was actually zero in both of those pools. So we believe that we've resolved the issue that has been plaguing all of those pools. And as of the end of last week, we were filling the other two pools, which are much larger and contain a lot more water. I didn't hear anything today, so I don't know exactly when those other two pools will be filled, but we're not too far away from that at this point.
Goodness, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the bringing back the Select Board.
Liaison Report.
Liaison Reports, which used to be reserved, like, public comments to the end of the meeting when everybody was worn out and ready to go home. So we have put them up front, and I think probably like the public since we have five of us, and we take two minutes each, that will take about ten or, ten or fifteen minutes to go through them if we have enough reports to discuss. So who wants to go first?
I can do it.
Okay, give yourself two minutes.
Sure. I might take a little more than two, but just picking up on a couple of
You can have a few of my seconds.
Thank you. So I'm getting started with the liaison role with several committees, but picking up on a couple of the things that were in the Town Managers' Report. The Board of Health has been closely involved with the coordination around the shelter, including the, the coordination of the, of the physicals and immunizations that took place, and also tracking the, the pool. And as I understand it, there might have been a, a small issue too with having two large empty pools impacting the summer swimming program getting started because of the safety issue of having a really large empty pool. So it's, it's really good news to hear since then that the, that the pools are getting filled, so that reduces some of that risk. Also, interestingly, the Board of Health is already working on the, on the septic permit and the building permit related to the middle school project, which is another committee that I'm now, on the middle school building project is, construction has begun. We will have our, our next Middle School Building Committee meeting on, on this Thursday. The last one was May twenty-fifth, and that will be the first general contractor update. But because of the construction of the solar and the fields and the demolition, the septic permit is fairly complicated for the middle school because it has to be a tight-tank situation at first, because there won't be the space to build the, the septic field initially. So it's a fairly complicated permitting operation, and it's nice to know that, that, you know, that, that process is already underway. I'm also covering the DEI Commission, which had a workshop with the consultants around goals for the FY twenty-four season, and they'll be meeting again tomorrow night. And the Personnel Board is working with the Town Manager and the interim HR Director on the charge and the bylaw updates, and beginning to make progress there with, with a new member in place. Also, it's worth noting that the Class and Compensation Plan implementation that we approved at town meeting is going forward for July first. So it looks like that's, that's in good shape, considering that's next week. Lastly, in terms of going over my assignments, we're, we're going to need, I think, to fill some slots on the Financial Audit Advisory Committee. It seems like that's fallen into a little bit of lack of staffing. Now, there isn't a pending issue for that, but there are several committees that are supposed to nominate folks, and it looks like there may be a couple of out-large members. So I'll be looking for input, if anybody has anything on people that might be in a good position to serve on that, that group. That, I think, is it for me. I didn't time myself, so I can't tell you whether that was two minutes or not.
Well, we'll just rely on your sense of equity.
Okay.
Mary, do you want to go next?
Sure, I'll go next. The first committee I attended was the Agricultural Committee. It's my first time I've been to their meetings. It was great having, I could listen to farmers talk all day, so that was really fun meeting. One thing they are working on is the Ag Day in September. And if you remember last year at Ag Day, the Select Board's table was a little bit disorganized, so we might want to get ahead of it this year, and it's a great opportunity to solicit volunteers. So let's just keep that in the back of our head, September, get a booth there. The next committee would be the Planning Board. The Planning Board is down a member, and it's, which is important, because the Planning Board has a, has a lot on its plate this year. So if anybody knows of anyone, and I'll be keeping my eyes open for a member, a lot of the people on there are new. Linda Miller, the new chair, gave an excellent presentation on the technical aspects of the MBTA Communities Law, and they're getting prepared for Wednesday night's meeting. But if, again, if anybody is interested in serving on the Planning Board, we'd be more than happy to talk with you. Finally, I went to the FinCon meeting. The FinCon meeting is, the FinCon's doing great. They seem to be firing on all cylinders. They've got two, two initiatives this year. One is a communications subcommittee, which is really to help educate the town on what, what the role of the Finance Committee is and the work that they do, a leading up-to-town meeting. So I think that's wonderful, that they're actually getting out there and talking to people. And then the other initiative that they have is taking a closer look at debt. All forms of debt, we call it Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. We've, last year, we focused on Tier Three, but we're trying to expand that this year to focus on the lower-cost capital items. And I would also like to wrap in, looking at the capital backlog that we have in the enterprise funds. We'll talk more about that when we talk about the annual town meeting calendar. But just for now, the FinCon is definitely interested in getting a broader look at the town's capital spending and the schools' capital spending. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Linda, do you have anything that you'd like to have
Yes, thank you.
discuss?
Yes, thank you very much. Since we last talked about this, the Concord Housing Roundtable met, each of the housing committees could talk about the, their progress towards the housing production goals. The thing that was important about this particular meeting, besides the cross-committee communication, was that the Planning Board and the Select Board, some Select Board members and were represented, and in an interest so that we can all be on the same page for moving forward with housing production goals. I attended the parking meter listening session with the business community, which we were invited to attend if we had the opportunity. I would say that, as I think we read in the Town Managers' Weekly Report, that in general, the businesses were in favor of the new pilot program to suspend the parking meters for a year. The, the West Concord, a couple of the West Concord businesses had reservations, and mostly that's because of how crowded the parking situation is on the street in front of their stores and the use of those parking spaces by commuters. So the, the town staff who are overseeing all of this are going to look into ways that that might be monitored to address that situation going forward. I did attend, even though it's not my committee, I did attend the Two-Two-Nine Main Street Advisory Task Force, having been involved with them a couple years in the past. And this particular meeting, Mina Marcarius, our, our town council, was there to assist the committee in thinking about some of the legal issues they need to tackle in the coming, coming year in terms of their task force responsibilities. So that was very interesting. There have been a meeting, probably a couple, since we last talked about this, of both the Housing Trust and the CHCD and the CHA for that reason, all three of the housing groups separately. Again, I, I have to say that each of these committees, even more so than in the past, are so focused on the particular priorities that have been spelled out in the housing production plan. And in terms of CHCD, the, they talked about some preliminary plans for how the, how three additional units at Estebet River Bluff may look like, and they're making significant progress on that. All three of these groups also talked about what units could immediately go on the SHI, when I say immediately, before the end of the year. And it's predicted that up to six may be able to go on before the end of the year. There are also some project-based vouchers, housing vouchers, that, that CHA has responsibility for, that could also be used for some of the projects that are in the pipeline. So a lot of good work being done there, as always. I attended the Estebet Regional Housing Consortium. Again, not necessarily in our immediate geographic area, but one of our town residents who's with the Housing Foundation was one of the speakers, and talking about what municipalities can do to address being in step with the housing, affordable housing requirements that they need to meet. So that was very well, and we were well-represented in that meeting. CPC met and are finalizing the qualifications and conditions for the grant awards that were recommended at this past town meeting, and those will go out sometime soon to all the recipients. They also discussed, and this also involved the Housing Trust, an agreement in terms of how the funds that will be transferred from CPC to the trust will be utilized. And so that is being reviewed by our town council at this point. And then last, or at least among the highlights here, I guess, I attended the HATS meeting that just happened of the Hanscom Area Towns Committee's Select Board Representatives, and Terry Ackerman also attended that meeting. Neil Rasmussen gave his, gave a presentation very similar to the one that we received. And the HATS Committee talked about their interest in having a joint letter signed by all the communities that would then go to the governor. And I believe Terry's, actually Doug Lucent, who's the current Chair of the HATS, took a letter that was, draft letter that was provided by Terry, and added some material to it, and it's included in our packet for consideration. And the expectation is that it will probably take probably about two different Select Board meetings in each of our towns in order to get agreement about what that final letter looked like. But the feeling is that a joint letter that's signed by all of us, even if we want to individually, town by town, submit our own letters, will be very effective. And I think that's the highlights.
Thank you. Thank you. Terry, do you have any reports to make? Thank you. Terry, do you have any reports to make?
Yes, Linda covered a lot of what I was going to cover, but a couple of questions first. Linda, you said six units might go on the SHI before the end of the year. Do you mean the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, or the end of the calendar year?
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
And Mary, I had a question. What is the date of the Ag Day in September?
I don't know, Terry.
Okay, all right.
I don't know.
Okay, so I agree.
I'll get, I'll find that out and let you know.
Yeah, so we can get ahead of it. That was good suggestion.
Okay. Yep.
I think it's September ninth.
That rings a bell, but I'll check.
Liza Bemis said at the
Is that a Saturday?
I could check.
It's September ninth.
September ninth.
Okay, thank you. So the Transportation Committee has been collaborating with Public Works on sidewalks, bike lanes, and winter maintenance. And next, they're going to be collaborating with the Planning Board on parking and MBTA zoning. So I think that is a good development to get these committees working together and out of their silos. I did attend some of the same meetings as Linda. Mimi Graney gave two listening sessions about the parking. And I agree with all of Linda's comments, but I want to add that very few people attended, which to me is a sign that there was not a lot of alarm in the community about our one-year experiment. There was not a lot of tension, a lot of concern. I think, let's try this experiment and hopefully it'll go well. And the 2229 Task Force that met, yes, it was really important for Mina to be there. In fact, Mina will be coming to an upcoming Select Board meeting to discuss what they're calling the Work Plan. There are four projects, sub-projects that he needs to work on for the Select Board and the Task Force, and he'll be going over all of that and will be giving some cost estimates on that whenever Kerry and Mina are ready to do that. And finally, I went to the DPW. The HATS issue is on the agenda, so we'll cover that later. There's a lot going on at the DPW. There was a, no increase in the solid waste and recycling fee last year. So this year, they're going to increase it 10%, which doesn't even cover all the costs. The costs are way up. But it will be going up 10% this year. The level one water restriction remains in effect, even though we've been having a lot of rain. So a lot of people are asking about that, and the reason is that Nagod Pond is offline. We haven't finished hooking all of that up yet. So we're at the level one water restriction this summer. And there will be two public forums coming up. Actually, no, there were two public forums on Warner's Pond. As you probably know, Adelia was there at the DPW meeting. Two hundred people responded to the survey. And as you know, the options are dredging or dam removal or do nothing. And it's probably going to end up going to town meeting so that we can really get a good consensus. So that's it for my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to report on a couple of things that I saw as being examples of how we go about business. We had a meeting of the Committee Chairs last week. It was, it was live, not hybrid, only in person. We had a full room, and it was, I think it was a lively and useful discussion. Had a chance to bring up a number of issues with the, with the Committee Chairs, including the first disclosure publicly of the 200-unit housing project that is being proposed for the Baker Avenue property. And people are very anxious to get an update on the cell phone coverage issue. And my interaction with the Library Committee, again, I felt something, the way I, I feel that things ought to go in terms of committee liaison relationships. There were several vacancies on the Library Committee that were caused by employment opportunities that people on the committee felt were advantageous and were taken. So I actually, I met with the Library Director and discussed with her what the needs were and what, why there was that degree of turnover. And then I, I actually met with all three candidates and spoke with each one of them for over an hour to get a feeling for, feeling for what their views were on the, on the committee and find out, to build a personal relationship with them. So I think that went very well, and those people are being nominated and appointed to the Library Committee. And I think they are very distinguished and dedicated people, and it was, I think it was a good process. We also had a meeting that was with the, with the School Committee Chairs and our IT Director, Jason, about the cell, cell, cell service problems, specifically for the high school, which may or may not be resolved by the current proposal that the town is pursuing. And Jason was able to come up with some useful suggestions to them, and he was going to be helpful to them. So we may be able to help them through that process using expertise that the town has. The, on an item that will be coming up later, when we're talking about Hanscom Field, Kerry and Meg and I met with an environmental attorney, and we are, we are considering engaging the services of somebody who has expertise in the environmental issues to, to advise us on how to approach the Hanscom Field development issue and to, and to monitor, monitor us for us in a way that we don't have the knowledge or contacts to be able to do. We are making some changes in the structure of the 250th, 50th Executive Committee to more align people with the actual functions that need to be done in terms of what we're going to be doing in 2024 and 2025. And as it turns out, we're able to get the, the, and this will be reflected in some appointments that will be brought, we'll be bringing forward to get some very high professional-grade services from people without the town having to spend any money in order to do so. Finally, I mentioned the fact that the bids today were open today for the Civil War Monument, and they came in at a figure that was expected and will enable them to go forward with the project of replacing the plaque and restoring at least the bottom part of the monument, which again, I guess is still scheduled for dedication in, on Memorial Day next year. How did I do for time?
You're over.
I'm over?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, well.
But it was good. It was good.
Okay, I have to stay after then.
But it's, it's very current. I mean, you're reporting on things that, that I just got at four o'clock today, so very current.
So anyway, thank you very much for listening, and we'll move then on to the town meeting, the annual town meeting calendar. And I, I know, I know that Carmen was not going to be here, but I don't see her on the, on the video either.
No, I don't either.
So who, Terry, who's going to present that?
I don't, I don't know. I see our town clerk, but I'm not sure that she was expecting to present.
I do remember the two issues that she asked us to talk about. Yeah.
You, you have them, I could
Well, one of them was, do we want to start on Monday instead of Sunday? And the other one is, do, do we want to have a preview meeting in December? And if so, what is the agenda for that meeting?
Right.
And I'm, I'm happy to
Great.
put a, put a plug in for, or to start the discussion on the December meeting. So it was actually staff that suggested to the moderator that perhaps the, the preview meeting that we have the first Saturday in December may actually be retooled as a sort of a primer for town meeting and maybe to review the process for submitting petition articles. And that maybe we push the preview meeting to sometime in early January after the warrant has closed, and we can talk about what has been submitted for warrant articles.
We're adding a meeting?
Potentially, but, but the, the first meeting would be just, wouldn't necess, it would be an optional type thing. So what we're finding is, it's for the warrant to open, you vote to open the warrant on Saturday, and then you're looking for people to talk, or the, the community is looking for people to talk about warrant articles the moment the warrant opens. And people are not always in a position to do that.
So I noticed that the schedule, as proposed, and I don't know if we want to share this online, but it's in the packet, has a joint Select Board School Committee Capital Planning Forum in September as well as the preview meeting in, in December. And my recollection from my time on the Finance Committee was that we had something we called the Coordination Meeting in September. So that was an opportunity for any board or committee that thought they were likely to be or was in the process of developing a warrant article to just say what they were headed towards as a way of getting a sense of what issues were going to be become warrant articles. And I always thought that was somewhat useful because it gave other committee a bit of a heads up that they might want to engage or at least understand of that. And I don't see any reason why that couldn't be done all in the same session, but as capitals.
Well, I, I'd like to have a broader conversation about the Capital Planning Forum because we've got three meetings actually that start this calendar that are talking about capital. And these three meetings are the results of recommendations that were made by the Capital Planning Task Force. And if you, last year was the first year we actually tried this. And if you remember, the first meeting and the third meeting were redundant. And if we just keep it to Tier Three, we don't have that, really that much to talk about. So I'm wondering if I propose that we collapse these three meetings, which might free up a day for what you're talking about, Mark, into one meeting and expand what we talk about during that meeting to include all the tiers of capital and capital investments in the Enterprise Funds. So that's what I was thinking of. But then, so Kerry, do you, do you get value from, from this joint School Committee Select Board capital? Do you find that valuable?
Well, as you mentioned, we, we just did it for the first time this past year, and it was, you know, the value was limited because we didn't have any Tier Three projects that were proposed. In a year that there actually are Tier Three projects proposed, even in the, in the 10-year period, I'm sure the discussion would be much different. But to have, I think the first meeting was good because we were able to put our future needs on the table, particularly in front of the School Board, even though we don't have specific years tied to investments. We were able to at least share with the, the School Board, the School Committee, what, what our long-term needs are. But because we don't have them plugged into any fiscal year, we're not, we're not able to talk about any specific impact. But if we had those projects and we were talking about the impact and how to mitigate, it would be a very different discussion. What I can tell you is I do not expect that we are going to propose any specific Tier Three projects in this next 10-year period. And I'll say what I said the last time. It's not that they're, they're not coming, we're just not ready to advance any and identify any particular year to move those forward.
So what about expanding it to downward to Tier One and Tier Two and talking about Enterprise Fund investments? Do you think that this would be a good time to do that?
I think that's fine. We, we did have some discussion about the timing of that because we want to make sure that we have the information to present to you. So September is too soon because the month of September is our capital planning month. So really, mid-October, I think, would be the earliest that we would be prepared to talk to you about what the requests are and what the impact of those would be.
So this is Terry. I want to clarify, I was on the Task Force. And the reason we have these three meetings is a compromise we struck. There were some on the committee that wanted to have a Capital Planning Committee, and some did not. And there was a real split on the committee, and this was the compromise that we struck. Because you might recall, before we had this process, the public was very confused about capital items. Some were in the articles, some were in the operating budgets, and some were on overrides. And it was all very confusing, especially about Jarrow and White Pond because they appeared on multi-years. So the purpose of these three meetings is, the first meeting is to give an idea so the town understands what the school might have for the next 10 years, and that school understands what the town might have. The second meeting is for the Finance Committee to ask whatever detailed questions they want to ask about debt service, et cetera. And the third meeting can be canceled if there is nothing specific being proposed. But I wouldn't want to see it permanently taken away from the process because the third meeting is very important if you have specific projects in specific years coming up. That's when we finalize everything. We've had the public input from the first two meetings, and now both the Select Board and the School Committee are supposed to agree, and the Superintendent and the Town Manager, everyone agrees, this is the capital plan at that third meeting. So we don't necessarily need to even have that third meeting if there is nothing specific this year. But I don't want to remove it permanently from the process.
Well, my understanding is that we needed to adopt a calendar because the, there are various time requirements and deadlines that different mandatory things need to take place in order to hold a town meeting on a certain day. And, and that it was necessary for us to decide that relatively soon. Might make sense for us to talk about the schedule, the, the elements of that schedule that are mandatory and are dictated specifically by the date on which we hold a town meeting. And we could have further discussion about the other items in that calendar that were optional or variable in terms of when they can be held. So the first question that was asked was, do we want, what date do we want to have the town meeting on? And I mean, that's, that's, I think, an important issue of policy, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's, I think it's, too bad we don't have the moderator here to help us with this, but.
My impression was that she, from the feedback she heard, she was tending towards Monday. Did you get that, Mark? Do you remember? Did you get that, Mark? Do you remember?
I I think so. I mean, on balance, the, my impression is that the Sunday town meeting start is is not that popular and hasn't really materially affected attendance. I I don't know whether staff has any.
I I can tell you, it's, it's not, a half day on Sunday is not popular with staff because it means the full, the full of the weekend staff is working to prepare for a half day. I think if it was a full day, it would, it it would be a little more popular. But the half day is just tough. And it does, it does impact people's ability to do what they do on Sunday mornings, which they're not able to do.
Yep.
I've, I've personally, when I was a member of the staff, found that we, it was the first time we tried the weekend. And it ended up being a 12-day work week. Because you worked five days and then you worked straight through and then you worked another five days. And it was just, you know, because there is literally no break. At least when we started on Monday, there would be, let's call it a lull in the late submissions of of presentations and whatever else would would come in through the weekend. The town moderator gets no break. But so I'd, I'd personally go for the Monday start and restoration of the previous calendar, even though that tends to mean, you know, you're looking at three sessions instead of two sessions for the town meeting overall.
Is that a decision that we're ready to make?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I did have some other general comments, but they weren't on these sort of statutory, what's the start date?
Right.
Um, so let's, let's get.
So yeah.
Okay, let's, I think, well, I'll make a motion, okay? Move to have the start date for the annual town meeting at Concord Carolina High School to be Monday, April 9th, April 29th, sorry, April 29th, through Wednesday, May 1st.
2024.
2024.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye, and hope we don't have logistics problems.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye, and you want to add that it starts at 7:00 PM?
It doesn't say that, but that's good to know. Um, does it start at seven? Carrie, do you know?
It does on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay.
Good.
We have that on.
Good. How about the town preview meeting?
So my general comment was, um, I think, given the importance of accomplishing a successful outcome with respect to MBTA communities, we should be looking at how to promote that solution in, in a couple of different ways. It seems to me that having the planning board hearing be so late in the cycle has the effect of potentially creating a, the situation where substantive concerns about that, about whatever that solution is, don't come up until what is it, the?
March 13th.
March 13th, exactly, which, you know, is the third, third public hearing. I I would consider whether or not the planning board might be able to come earlier and whether, if, especially if we're thinking about doing something with these capital meetings, whether there might be something else that's sponsored even earlier that's, that's specific to that. Because um I think zoning articles are notoriously challenging for town meeting to get their minds around.
Yep.
And if we, if we want them to be well-understood, we, we need to do something about how well they're, how well-publicized those hearings are and how, what the con, specific content is of those articles, whatever they may be, um, in the process.
Are we, are we the ones who determine when the planning board has its hearings on zoning articles? Or are they the ones who determine? Because they have statutory requirements to meet in terms of public notice and advertising of all the.
Carrie? You might want to hear from Carrie.
Carrie?
Yes, thank you, Henry. Exactly as you said, the planning board, you, you set the public hearing in the timeline, but that has to be a minimum amount of time after the closing of the warrant in order to allow for the posting of the public hearing notice. So that's why it's generally feels a little later than um. It, it might be if it didn't have to be posted for two consecutive weeks, the first one being at least two weeks prior to the actual public hearing date.
No, Mark, I'm I'm sympathetic with what you're saying, which is that this is going to be a complex article and the more we get out in front of people, the better. But I'm thinking that the um, the planning board, I'm, I'm assuming is going to be having several forums during that time of year. Okay?
One would hope.
It will.
Yeah.
And on December 2nd is maybe too soon, really, for them to have anything definitive. Hopefully.
So.
Because the warrant doesn't really close until the 3rd. So to ask them to have something definitive on the 2nd when they don't really have to have it until the 3rd of, until a month later, I don't, I think they'll be, in other words, I think there's already forums being scheduled so we don't have to hold something on this calendar.
And I was, I was specifically talking about the public hearing March 13th. So if we took last year's as an example, I would bet that there are quite a few citizens who didn't know there was a food truck article on until they either opened the warrant that they received in the mail um at some point in mid-February or maybe even didn't hear about it until whatever date it was in March at that. And that's the kind of the worst possible scenario because it means that valuable input from the community about the particular topic wasn't, didn't get there in time to potentially affect the content of the article. So I'm just raising the point that I think that we, we do an awful lot with finances well ahead of the warrant even opening to try to make sure that people understand what's going to be on the warrant, what they're going to be asked to vote for. And that's the process that tends to get us to consensus by the time the warrant actually comes out. And I'm suggesting that in this year in particular, it would be important for us to engage in that kind of pre-look and publicity and hopefully dialogue around this particular, this particular action.
Is Linda Miller on?
She was.
Linda Miller is the chair of the planning board and she, we might want to hear.
There she is.
I'm on, uh, I'm here, yes. But I I'm not sure how I can weigh in in terms of our full schedule. We are planning to have, as you know, the meeting in two days and that will be followed by um mapping sessions in July, August and September. And prob, and in September, October, November, we're going to be discussing the actual zoning and getting feedback on that. And then with the hope, you know, determination to file with the warrant the 3rd of January and then to continue discussions with the community, hopefully on a, on, on a monthly basis. But you, you point out rightly, there, there are many other things on the agenda that MBTA cannot take up the entire bandwidth for the town between now and, and April. So um, you know, we will also be discussing MBTA at every planning board meeting. And I'm sure the housing groups will continue to discuss it. But I, I do very much see that if we're waiting until March 13th to get um people who normally just focus on the public hearings, they will not have input, they will be able to have a more of a um, now, I don't know how much input or change we can make at that point between then and six weeks later.
So we can't really, can't we really leave it to the planning board to schedule? It sounds like they're going to be working this through very thoroughly over, I mean, during, starting now and going through town meetings. So the only thing that we might really want to fix is the actual date of the formal statutory hearing that they hear, that they have, uh, that they, they have to have in order to uh, have a public hearing under the law on, on, on zoning changes.
Yeah, I might make this suggestion. I think those are, those are all good comments. And I think that it'd be good to try and understand what's the shortest period of time that we could, you know, how early in the process could we move that hearing if the town clerk can inform us on that? Um, what I was going to suggest is, in a similar vein to having a, the November 16th entry here that says Finance Committee Public Forum on Capital Planning, maybe, uh, I think I heard Linda saying that sometime in December there was likely to be a, a planning board forum on zoning articles or something along those lines. Maybe if that simply appeared in this schedule as a way of, of trying to make sure that people who, when they, when they see this schedule, recognize there's an opportunity to learn about this thing before it goes into the warrant at, at an appropriate time in their schedule, that might be just useful for information purposes. Many of the meetings on the schedule are basically informational.
Well, since we're, they're all, they're, this has like a couple of dozens specific dates on it.
Yes.
And um, I think it's going to be difficult for us to negotiate here uh, about which ones to change and how, how to change them. Is this something that we ought to work on between now and our next meeting and to come back with a?
I think, I think I'm, we're getting confused here between things that are statutory and things that are just, things that, that aren't.
Yeah.
So um, I think we need to be clear on things that are statutory and the public hearing for the planning board is. And I think the question is, can we move that up?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a question. Maybe Carrie can answer that now and we could.
Move it up, having a deal.
Sooner, sooner, yes, we should move it so sooner. Um, the other ones. Carrie?
Oh, Carmen is here.
Yes, sorry. I uh, I think you were, you had this on for 7:15. Apologies. I was in an event that I just left in order to attend this meeting.
No, it was 6:45.
Well, in any event, we are.
Okay.
Do you need a recap, Carmen?
So the question before, before the two of you, that is, how early can we hold the statutory hearing on the warrant, on the warrant articles, I mean, on the zoning articles that are going to be on the warrant?
Uh, I am not 100% sure the answer to that question. My memory is that it has to be within uh, maybe, I, I actually, I would be guessing. But there is, there is a time constraint on it. I, that is correct.
In both, in both directions, that is, in terms of how early or how late.
Yes, and I, we have had situations in the past where we've had to rehold a hearing because we've, um, as a matter of fact, in uh, in our COVID year, because we delayed town meeting, it was necessary to do the hearings again.
Would Carrie know how early?
How soon really depends on the context of what the public hearing will be held on. And I think that's something I would feel more comfortable having Elizabeth address because it's, it's not just purely looking at the, when the warrant closes and then two weeks after the soonest posting. If there's material they need to, to gather to produce and provide information, then they need time to do that before the public hearing is held. The minimum is that the public hearing notice has to be, the first public hearing notice has to be at least two weeks before the public hearing is held. And then on the other end, the um, after the public hearing is held, depending on the timing between that and town meeting, there needs to either be a report to town meeting or an oral presentation to town meeting. And COVID threw all of that out of whack, so.
Should we table this? Is, what is the deadline for having this um, schedule approved?
I, I don't think there is any specific deadline. It's just something that we like to get set in stone as soon as possible.
No, what is the, what is the first date that is mandatory uh, that needs to be, that needs to be decided? Is the date on which the warrant closes?
Probably the date the warrant opens.
Yeah, I would ask the moderator or town clerk to respond, please.
Now, here she is.
I, I would note that if we wish to use the high school for town meeting, um, the high school is already planning, if they are not mostly done with it, their schedule for next year. And um, if we don't want, for example, to have a collision with a scheduled play in the auditorium or tournament in the gymnasium, we need to let them know so that they can accommodate our schedule.
We already voted that we would begin the town meeting on Monday.
Excellent.
So we voted through that and then we turned our attention to the preview meeting. And then we started discussing the dates for the mandatory hearings. And that's as far as we got.
Okay, and what, what was, what was your decision about what to do with the um, the town meeting preview meeting?
We didn't come to a conclusion.
So this is Linda. May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, I, I, Mark, I, I heard your good reasoning for considering a later date uh, for the um, planning board public hearing. And I do think we need Elizabeth's feedback on this. But I think this particular year, given that there are going to be a number of public forums and opportunities for discussion about the community zoning, that there would be some benefit to keeping it a little bit later, um, just so we see where people are coming in uh, in terms of their understanding, their, their concerns and et cetera. So um, that, that's how I come down on it at this point.
And to be clear, I was trying to suggest that we put something else on the calendar earlier than the mandatory hearing as a way of signaling that it's going to be important to pay attention to the zoning articles ahead of getting, waiting until that last hearing, which is, which isn't the last hearing because enterprises come afterwards, but ahead of that hearing date. So what I'm trying to suggest is that we should signal that zoning and zoning articles are going to be important and try and enforce that discussion to occur even ahead of the warrant actually closing.
I, I think we will. I think we will, Mark. I think the work that the housing groups and the planning board and the planning department, um, there will be a lot of community discussion and way, well ahead of the March 13th date.
And I, I think we need to do our part as the select board to really promote that.
I do too.
Okay.
So really, the only thing that we really need to vote on is when town meeting is and when the warrant opens and closes?
Yes.
Anything else that needs to be determined by us in advance?
Well, the other thing that was on the, that Carmen was talking about is the agenda for the town meeting, preview meeting, whether we even want to have that, what's the agenda? And then I brought up the whole issue of capital, the cap, the capital plan, which I think we should maybe take offline or not offline. We should maybe table that for now and come back and have a conversation with the finance committee and the town manager as far as.
What I'm saying is that those are like, um, essentially scheduling of those is optional. And, okay, and, and the, the ones, the things that we really need to vote on and determine and fix are the date of the town meeting and the dates of the opening and closing of the warrant. And is there anything else that we need to actually decide on now?
So I would make the suggestion that the meeting that's listed for September twenty-sixth, in addition to being a capital planning forum, include, um, a committee coordination function whereby, um, committees are invited to provide a brief, like one slide preview of any article that they're developing for this year's town meeting.
Well, actually, what I heard was earlier was that the town manager told us that that date is really too early to have a good capital planning discussion. So I don't think that September twenty-sixth is appropriate for capital planning anymore. It should be moved later in the year. But I think, but again, I'm wondering if this is a discussion, um, that we could have with the finance committee later, and for now, just look at the things that we have to determine to get the, the town meeting going and what happens. Actually, so Mark, you know, I hear what you're saying, that you'd like to have a heads up earlier as far as what's happening, but I think September twenty-sixth is way too early. I know it's too early, that's what I heard for capital.
It's fine if we want to have the same type of meeting that we had last year, and we could do the tier one, tier two, tier three at the November meeting if, if the finance committee would agree to that. We, we can do that. I, I just don't want to lose track of this because it will be the fall before you know it, and we have to know what our targets are.
So you understood the side tonight?
Parsh, around six.
Yes. Could we, could we, could we have public comment from Parsh?
Thank you. Parsh, I'm a town chair of the finance committee, um, three ninety-seven Sudbury wrote, uh, a little commentary on capital planning and what the committee's trying to, finance committee's trying to do this year. And we saw a little bit of a preview at the last meeting we just had last Thursday. Right now, if you ask for the capital plan for Concord, you go to three or four different places, and one element of it doesn't exist right now, although the regional school district is working on a capital plan for the regional high school. Our thought is, at least from the finance committee's perspective, we're going to try to ask all of those entities, not counting the enterprise funds right now, to help us put together, I'll call for now, a consolidated plan, a little piece of paper that has all of those plans in one place. We don't even have that. We were halfway there, three quarters of the way. We got the CPS current, not what they're thinking about doing next year, but the current plan, we have the town, and we're understanding what the current processes are, to have all that in one document. We understand from Gail and Carrie that they're in the process of rethinking a little bit about the capital planning process and that they haven't made those decisions for next year, which I understand. What we're hoping for is at least by September, we'd have some sense of, okay, what are the elements that you might be tweaking in the planning process? And now that we have a, I'll call it consolidated document from the summer, is that the base off of which you're working so that when you make decisions for tier one and tier two for fiscal year twenty-five budget later in the year, whether it's October or November, you've got a baseline document that you could say, okay, here's what it was, and here are the changes in October, November, so here are the changes that we're making in that document. And I think, um, Terry pointed out rightly that the December meeting does provide an opportunity for at least the FinCom and the public to kind of say, okay, you, you're making these changes, you told us about them October, November, how is it coming together now that you're a month closer to actually having the budget requests? And so that would in essence be the final sort of public picture before everything goes into the warrant, which is why at least having a meeting, what's labeled number two and number three would be important. One maybe less so because we're trying to put that together now. We can make it available, make it publicly distributed, maybe you don't have to talk about it in September, but that's what we were hoping to do. Does that make sense in terms of what our vision or objective is? When we focus on capital planning and capital spending this year.
Well, so if I, these three dates that we have, what, what would you, would you keep all three dates?
I, I would, if you're going to drop one of them, I would drop the September one. Because as I said, Gail came in last week, gave us a little sense of how the planning process for the town works today. We now have a list for the town. In July, the school committees are doing the same thing. They're going to talk to us about their capital planning process.
Okay.
And then they're going to give, they already, public schools already have a list. What we don't have and that they're working on is the regional high school is doing an assessment of what they need, tier one and tier two. I'm hoping by September, October, they might have that, but if it happens in November and all three groups come together in November with one document, that would be a good meeting to have publicly.
Uh, this is Terry, um, I basically agree with that, but, um, I think we'd solve a lot of problems by, if September twenty-sixth is too early, why don't we just move it to the middle or the end of October? It's a short meeting and it sets you up for the finance committee meeting.
I, I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
These are not meetings that take three hours. They're part of a regular finance committee or regular school committee or regular select board meeting. They take maybe half an hour and it gives a general idea and it gives public input, which is what the public said they wanted, a, a meeting-
We had, we had no public input last year, none.
That's interesting. Well, that was something that even at the finance committee, you didn't have any public comments?
Well, part of why we didn't is because last year was focused on tier three. I think we have to keep that in mind.
Okay.
What we're trying to do as a finance committee is focus on tier one and two, because there's a lot of money being spent in one and two.
Okay, so maybe we'll have more interest in more-
Hey, I don't think, Terry, respectfully, it'll take thirty minutes to go over tier one, tier two projects, not just for fiscal year twenty-five. But remember, we're asking for five and ten years if available, so we may not, you know, opine on years four and five, but it'll be there and people may have questions. So I think it will take more than a half hour.
Right, um, I'm talking about if you move that September twenty-sixth meeting to the middle or the end of October, it gives Carrie and her team and Dr. Hunter and her team more time to put everything together and gets a document in place, a tentative document, but now it's ready for November sixteenth, when you can ask your detailed questions at the finance committee meeting.
And again, I think for this year, because recognizing we're in a bit of a transition, I think we'd be comfortable if we have some preliminary stuff in the summertime, instead of having them come back in September and then again, or in October and then again in November. So maybe we drop for this year anyway, the, what's here on September, and just go with the November, what, what date in November, November sixteenth meeting, which is when they'll come with their thoughts around what they want to change for next year and how the overall five and ten year project plans have changed. That, that's what I'm suggesting this year. And then next year, you can think about, okay, we have a plan that was approved at town meeting. Let's have, put on a September meeting to get some, so you can think about that next year as well, if you want to do three steps.
So maybe, why don't we, on the, um, capital planning and financial issues, why don't we rely on what the finance committee wants to do, and the same as with the planning board on the zoning issues? You know, I mean, they're the ones have to, you know, run this, run these parts of the agenda. So, um, I'd have, I'm happy to defer to them.
I am too. What about Terry? Terry, what do you think?
Um, I guess that will work. I'm not confident, Parshar, that you're going to get anything in the summer. Um, I think the first you'll see it is November sixteenth. And I just think that you and the public would be a little more prepared if there was a very brief meeting in October to get the document together. But if you want to see it for the first time in, in the middle of November, um, that's okay. I'm not opposed to it.
Well, and I respect that and I appreciate that. We already have a document based on the current plan as of today, right? Consolidated.
Yeah.
So, and all I'm suggesting is based on what Carrie has just said, late September, early October, they're just beginning to dive into the current plan and seeing how to move those building blocks. I just say we wait till November anyway. That's part of why we're doing the education in the summer. So we understand the process. We've seen a picture of what it, what it looks like now. Now, why force them to come in again? We're trying to be sympathetic to the workload that everybody has in the fall, as, as well as our own calendars for our committees. Why don't you say we drop the September one and move it and have the preliminary plan in November? You'll get some questions from finance committee, from the members of the public. They go off and think about it. They come back in December to the school committee and the select board. Hey, this is what we're going with in the town meeting. That would be the December one.
Okay.
Okay. What, what did we decide? We, we're almost ready to put this to bed. What did we decide about the town meeting preview with, the meeting on December second? We threw around some ideas. So one was to have it as an education for citizens petitioners. One was to keep it as a preview meeting, I think. One was to not have it at all. So where are we with that?
I feel pretty strongly that we need to have something like that. My opinion is that it's a little bit late in the process to actually have a preview meeting.
Okay.
Because you're talking December second, the warrant closes thirty-two days later, and a bunch of those days are holidays and, um, so that's why, you know, what we used to call coordination, which would typically involve Carlisle as well and, and be more overall tended to happen much earlier in the process so we'd understand what was in development. I could see how we could maybe accomplish some of that by asking some pointed questions at chairs breakfasts and things like that, but there's nothing like getting people in the room to hear from each other. So I want to-
I actually disagree with Mark because the last few years, many of the committees were not ready the first week of December. They really had no idea yet what they were going to do. And so I, 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 I know it's a tough month with the holidays. I don't know what to do about it, but I think moving it up earlier might make the problem worse.
So I agree with your premise, Terry. It seems to me that asking them earlier to get ready is a good way to make sure that they are ready at some point in December.
Okay. So can we put something together that we can vote on?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion. I remove that we approve the annual town meeting schedule that would begin on Thursday, November sixteenth with the finance committee forum. Uh, the, the, the other change would be that town meeting is not on Sunday, it's on Monday through Wednesday, we spoke about earlier, and that the Saturday, December second town meeting preview remains as is. That's, I'll just put that out there.
Is there a second to that?
Sure.
Okay. Are we, I should say, wait a minute, is there any further public discussion on this?
Well, just a point of order, we already voted on the town meeting starting on Monday.
You're right, you're right. Yep.
So really, this motion is just to adopt it as is with the removal of the September twenty-sixth meeting.
Exactly. That's the motion. That's the motion. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Escobedo?
Um, I, 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 I am concerned about not referencing the vote we already took, however.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo is, I, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoa, that was, okay. All right, what, what, uh, the, uh, they have-
You're off schedule.
Right, that's right, that's, and, uh, is there any, uh, is there any discussion on that?
I think so.
We, we do have, um, the chair of the retirement board, the director of the retirement system and CFO here.
We do have a memo in our package.
Right, and you had some questions at your last presentation of this.
The question I had last year was how much it was going to cost?
Yeah.
And, um, did it increase our liability by how much? And then, based on what it costs, where are we going to find that money in the budget?
Oh. You have two minutes each.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So we did go back to the actuary and the memo that is in the packet for this month shows the additional cost to the liability broken out by entity, which, um, Mary is what you had asked for to have, you know.
I found that somewhat confusing, I'll have to admit. Um, what is the annual cost to the town? This, this for F, for FY twenty-five, the one-time cost?
So it would be, so the total cost is the six hundred and eight thousand nine ninety-three. And then they did show what the cost would be if we spread that over four years or over five years. So on the second page of the memo, if it was over four years, it would be one sixty-six nine one seven. And over five years would be one thirty-seven six oh one.
And it's up to us whether we do it for four or five years.
It would be up to the, it would be up to the retirement board.
I meant us, I meant us collectively, not us.
And I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay.
Retirement board almost threw something at me. It would be up to the retirement board, so that'll be part of the discussions we're having when we're looking at the new funding schedule and all of that. So that is on tomorrow's agenda.
So the, it, we could either do four years or five years, and if we do four years, it'd be a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, and what does that come out times four?
Hmm, do we have that here, Jill?
It's well over a half a million dollars, right?
Um, I'm reading this as a hundred and eighty thousand over the five years and two eighteen over the-
But just, but just the town, they're concerned about the town, not the entire plan. So if we look at, so it's one eighty for everybody that's included within it, but that includes the enterprise fund, the light plant. So the two numbers that impact the town and the town taxpayers are the one sixty-six over four years or the one thirty-seven over, five years.
But does that money come out of the retirement fund or does that come out of the, out of the current budget?
It comes out of the town's budget, so it would be an expense to the town that would be part of the budgeting process that we would factor that in when we're building the budget. It's below, outside of guidelines budget amount, so it would be, our annual contribution would increase.
Property tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it, it, it is a, you know, it is a budgetary item.
So my next question was, and what things within the town budget can we trade off so that we can fund this?
That would be discussions we would be having as we are building up the current budget, so it is outside of the guidelines number, so it's down below where-
There's a major about the pension. No, no, I have a bloody nose, sorry.
So Carrie, I guess the question is yours.
So we would look to where we are. We, we have the discussions each year on funding and this year we'll also, because of the way the markets were, there's a potential impact to the funding schedule on the pension as well. We do also have the pension reserve that we are using to help smooth the funding of the pension, so we could look at the returns of that and see what's available to help offset some of this as well. It's the long and short. We just received a lot of these numbers, so as we start to build, and this would be an FY twenty-five impact, not an FY twenty-four.
So it's got some things happening in the market that will help, right? Because interest rates are higher, so that will help, right?
Potentially in the future, currently, right now, when we're doing the pension valuation, it's based on last year's numbers, so the, the assets were down last year when we're looking at the funding schedule. So that is something that gets reassessed each year. But that's separate and distinct from this.
I'm asking these questions because whenever we get requests for spending, I think we really should think seriously about what are the trade-offs that the town has to make. Um, otherwise, we just layer and layer and layer. So I would really like to understand what trade-offs we have available to us to pay for this. Because if I understand that it's not a lot of money per person, it's like two, a two hundred and eighty dollar hit, I think that's not a lot of money, and yet it's going to cost us over a half a million dollars. So what trade-offs do we have? Do we have any that you can think of?
I simply think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
By my, but it's the right thing.
Well, I think that protecting property taxes is the right thing to do too.
Okay, you can agree to disagree.
Okay.
I think if I may speak, um, so this impact is just on the current retirees. We have about three hundred and fifty retirees, three hundred and eighty-one, I think is what the number is. So this is a one-year item that only impacts the current year retirees. So it's not going to be a liability that's going to be carried beyond the length of our funding schedule. So if the retirement board meets and they say, well, we'll keep the same discount rate of six and a half percent that we've had. And we, um, taken the appropriations over the next four years. At the end of the four years, this item goes away. So with any hope, there's going to be some market turnaround. Maybe we'll see better investment uh, returns over the next few years. And what we also do in the retirement world is we do what's called asset smoothing. So any year that we have asset gains, we recognize those gains over a four-year period. And the same thing happens with the losses. So they're all recognized in one quarter intervals for each year that we have asset gains and losses. So there's the potential of any year that we would have really good asset gains and this would be a minimal impact to the town. So the board has always been very conscientious about keeping the appropriations, um, not volatile. And we take, we take that, um, charge very seriously to make sure that, yes, the appropriations are coming in. We have level amortization with the funding schedule. And so there are other things we, we wouldn't want to increase the discount rate that the board currently assumes, which is six point five percent. But we've never gone up. But of course, if we did increase, we would be fully funded right now.
I understand.
And the, um, one thing that we're very proud of with the pocket retirement board is that we're in the top five throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with a hundred and four retirement systems. Pocket is in the top five as far as funding status.
Yep.
Yeah. So we're
We, I, I know that and I'm, you do a great job.
We're crying very hard.
I know, and you do a great, and I feel really, it's good to know that we live in a town that's seriously funding its liability.
Yes.
Um, and also I'm, I'm glad that you're conservative with some of your assumptions around, um, interest rates so that.
And I think I was just cautioning that the schedules this year are a little different because of what the market did last year. So right now we have the lost position that maybe next year it would be a gain position, but I don't want to be forward.
We don't know.
So the bar we are with.
Hmm, okay.
And the other good thing, if I may add too, is that the state is re, um, requiring all the systems to be fully funded by twenty forty. We expect to be fully funded by twenty twenty-nine. And that's if we don't have very good investment returns over the next four years. We could be fully funded next year depending upon what the market does. So.
But if I understand correctly, this is all great and I'm glad to hear that this proposal in front of us would actually increase the amount of money that we would have to fund.
Just for these, this group of people, three hundred and eighty-one retirees.
Right.
Um, and I, I did not have a chance to run any, um, age factors to see how many retirees, we've already lost five since this proposal was presented. Um, so those five are not going to get the increase that was, um, set forth here. And to grant the extra two percent is, um, the extra two percent cost of living adjustment is really a benefit to our lower paid pensioners. The higher paid pensioners could take it or leave it. They make good money in their pensions. But we do have some folks that aren't even at the fourteen thousand annual mark to get thirty-five dollars a year cost of living adjustment. So to give five percent would help those folks stay within the buying power that they had last year.
I see. Thank you.
I wanted to make one just quick correction to the memo. Um, there was something that I had noticed when I was reading it and it's the, it's a sentence in the um, second paragraph that says that the system annual gross monthly retirement allowance is thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty. It should, that should, monthly word should be annual allowance.
It's about twenty-two hundred monthly.
So just in case somebody is, is reading the packet and recognizing, we, we do know that, that that's not correct. So we are talking about on average relatively modest um, amounts and, and as just further clarification that the two percent is on only fourteen thousand of that if the person, as you referred to Linda, actually have fourteen thousand dollars of, of retirement pension benefit. Okay.
You ready for a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, I move to approve the acceptance of chapter two six nine of the acts of twenty twenty-two and act relative to cost of living adjustees for retirees.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, next one is the, the, uh, the bond.
Aspect plus bond.
Yeah, they find.
Aspect proficiency.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And, uh, uh, if the, um, the transposition is been corrected.
Yes, so within the memo, moving back to the bond anticipation note in second paragraph, the amount that we are being reimbursed at three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So the one seventy-six borrowed was correct. It was just transposition error. They are doing these on Father's Day.
Well, was, if we had artificial intelligence, you're reviewing this, they would have picked that up, wouldn't they?
Great when you prove it and the math still works because you knew in your head what the number was going to be. So the state will be reimbursing us three hundred and twenty-four thousand out of the five hundred we had anticipated. So that is why we did, we found that out on June seventh, when Delia Kay was informed that the reimbursement would be less than what we had had anticipated. So at that point, we had already done the general bond obligation offering. So in order to ensure we had the funds by June thirtieth, this was the avenue.
So the lesson from that is never, um, never, uh, overestimate the, the funding that the state is going to give you, no matter what has been promised.
Correct.
Hmm, so just, Gail, to make sure, I want to make sure that I, so I'm reading what's in the packet and it says the town was notified that will be only reimbursed two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
It should be three hundred.
Three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
Which results in the one seventeen.
All right, just, just so people know where we are.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So I don't think there's a lot of, lot to discuss here, is there?
No.
Is there any further comment on it?
Um, I have a question. Um, why did the state, um, change its mind that it was going to fund five hundred thousand and then it only funded three hundred and twenty-four thousand?
It was in the grant application. It was, um, what they were actually looking at to be reimbursed. Um, there was confusion among the grant itself and then the actual award letter that was not noted until Delia went and submitted all of the paperwork that she was informed that the calculation they were using was slightly different than what had been understood at the beginning part of the process. So we are continuing to see if there are any other avenues to obtain more reimbursement. But as of right now, this is what we have been told the maximum they will reimburse is.
Okay. Which my father would say clear as mud. Yes.
We ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the sale of a hundred and seventy-six thousand five point three seven five percent general obligation bond anticipation notes dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three and payable June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four to, to Oppenheimer and Company at par plus one dollar premium and accrued interest, if any, of the town.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's next?
It is the, um,
Regional.
Regional.
Correct.
Good.
Hey, I'm gonna do my best to get us back on track, but I can't make any promises. Um,
We're not off track, are we?
Yeah, we are. And we're, we're a little bit, we're a little bit behind schedule. So I would like to start by recognizing some individuals who are here and available for questions who have been working hard on this endeavor. In, in the room with me is our fire chief, Tom Judge. Um, also Lieutenant Brian Goldman, who during most of this period was overseeing dispatch, but I don't, not, not anymore. Um, he, he is here, um, Chief Tom, okay, he is on vacation. In our Zoom audience, I know we have Mark Katie, who is our project manager. Uh, we may also have, oh, I'm sorry, I saw Jason just popped on. So we have Jason Bulger, our chief technology officer, who has been very involved in this as well. And we may have Acton Town Manager, John Mangiarati. I'm not, I'm not seeing him, but there are a couple of unidentified devices. And I know he was going to try to attend, but he also had a select board meeting this evening as well. So again, I, I will go through this as quickly as I can. I did include what I think is a fairly lengthy memo in the packet, but one of the reasons I did that is because three out of the five of you are new on the board since the board voted in May of twenty twenty-one to authorize former town manager Stephen Crane to execute, um, an IMA for the formation of this district.
And it was only approved by two and a half votes.
And it, it was approved on a, on a three to two vote of the select.
One of them was a half a vote.
Um, but again, only, um,
No, I'm not, no, pointing no fingers.
Only current select board member Terry Ackerman and Linda Escobedo were, were on that board. So again, this, this is new and we have talked about putting this agenda item on the board meeting off and on for a very long period of time because at the very least, there are some housekeeping items that are needed, need some attention in, in the IMA. There are nothing of material consequence according to our town attorney, but they are some things, there are some things that need to be updated.
The, I think the, uh, the memo you wrote is very complete and very fair.
Um, I, and I would say it's, it's, it's brutally honest and, uh, that is, that is something that is, is difficult to do, but this is a serious issue and it's important to, to put all of the cards on the table.
The longer it goes on.
Um, so what I would like to do is, is for the, the benefit of, of this group and, and the audiences, is just to go through some of the highlights of what is included in the report that was presented to you. So the, um, the vote of the select board was based upon the recommendation of, of our former town manager uh, with the, the basis in a report that the Collin Center from UMass Boston put together on the, um, feasibility of forming a regional dispatch district. And, um, that was predicated on information that is, that is documented in this memo and the the re, the report itself, which really looked at these two communities um, and the unique, unique opportunity because we're neighboring communities of similar size and population, similar call volume. And, um, the Collin Center identified and, and stated in their report that we are quite well suited to regionalize dispatch. And, and I mention that because I hear this quite often at the board meetings that we are quite well suited. And, um, as, as anybody knows who, who follows politics, um, we also are quite um, unwell suited with the town of Acton and have had quite a bit of, um, controversy. We've had litigation, um, significant litigation on our water supply. And, um, it makes for a very interesting discussion where one day of the week, we're quite well suited on regional dispatch. And later in the week, we're talking in, in difficult discussions about water supply. So I, I guess I, I just point that out because um, being neighbors and being of similar size with similar call volume for dispatch doesn't necessarily make you quite well suited. Um, so what I will say is that in the report, the, um, the Collin Center identified some key outcomes of regionalizing dispatch. Uh, they mentioned additional dispatch personnel to deal with an increased surge of calls. Opportunities for dispatcher advancements, uh, new equipment and better technology, establishing dispatch, standardized dispatch protocols, uh, cost of, um, efficiencies through economy of scale, cost savings, increased professionalism of operations, um, independent dispatch department. What they didn't know and what we have talked about, at least on our side, is, um, what's important to us is the increased safety, we believe, that is provided to public safety personnel as a result of having increased, um, person power, in, increased availability. You know, we have two dispatchers that are on duty and there are times where we have multiple events running in town and, and two dispatchers are taxed, uh, can become taxed very easily. And I shouldn't say very easily. Uh, there is the opportunity for, for them to be uh, pulled in many different directions. And so if, if there are three or four dispatchers on, it makes those situations easier. So that, that was something that was very important to us. And, and I think uh, one of the major reasons for considering this particular opportunity. The report talked a lot about cost savings and, uh, there are significant cost savings that were identified in the report and those come from, uh, spreading the cost of the service over to communities and also increased grant opportunities from the state. But I would caution that, uh, that should not be the driving force in forming a district. If cost savings materialize, that's wonderful. If not, um, I think the most important things are enhancing service and safety and maybe future cost avoidance. So when we, if we ever got to the point that our call volume required three dispatchers on most of the shifts or all of the shifts, and there was an opportunity to partner with a neighboring community and we didn't have to bear that cost ourselves, that, that might be uh, something worth looking at. But I don't think that people should look at the identified seven hundred plus thousand dollars of cost savings across the district as something that will necessarily materialize. Because one of the things that is referenced in the report and it is documented in one of the appendixes, but it is not really quantified, is what we call the administrative duties that dispatch typically provides to police and fire, mostly to police. And, you know, we, that, they are detailed in the report. If you have questions about that, Lieutenant Goldman certainly could address those. But there, there is a lot of work that dispatchers do on behalf of, of public safety. And I should mention, although I didn't see him, um, it is, it is possible that Rich Landers, our lead dispatcher is, is one of the, um, people on an un, unidentified device, uh, because he was.
And one of the most important services that they provide is having live staff available in the police station twenty-four seven, so that there is a human being there to deal with people who walk in the door with a problem day and night.
That, that certainly is something that is cited on a regular basis as, as a reason to, to retain dispatch in-house. I think there are workarounds. There are communities that have successfully regionalized and they found ways to, to work around by relocating other, other staff there. But that, that's definitely cited as, as an issue. Um, what I do want to mention is that all of the activities of this regional effort have been funded through the state, through the state E nine one one department. And the state has allocated close to one point seven million dollars to this regional dispatch over two fiscal years, fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, to date, we have only spent seventy-five thousand of that, but I did want to mention what our But I did want to mention what are the, the notable actions I've, I've identified in the report. So we've hired a project manager, CTA consultants. They are actually out of Lynchburg, but we have a local representative, Mark Katie. And I did mention Mark is, is on the call with us today. We have secured grants in the amount that I mentioned before. Again, only 75,000 of that has been expended or committed to date. We have drafted a plan to build out and retrofit existing space adjacent to the Acton Public Safety Facility, which is located on, at 371 Main Street in, in Acton. And that includes obtaining quotes for any of the equipment, software and furniture that would be needed to outfit a new dispatch center. We have outlined a framework for all standard operating procedures and standard operating guidelines. And we launched a recruitment for a rec center director, uh, which has been placed on hold. And that was placed on hold at the specific request of your liaison to the Board of Directors, Terry Ackerman, and that was back in April. And we have been really at a standstill since April, uh, working to get on one of your agendas. And obviously we had town meeting, we had a, a very small window on an agenda before the transition on the board, but didn't think that that was an appropriate time to bring this up, because then we would again be dealing with a different, um, makeup of the board. And we wanted to make sure that, that the, the group that would be here through the, through the standup of this operation was the one that was voting on this this evening.
Is the $75,000 a number that's recognized as being a total cost across both towns? Or is that just a conquered expense?
Across both towns. So I think what I'd like to turn to next, unless this is a good opportunity to pause for questions. If, if not, I'd, I'd like to go through our specific concerns and what our recommendation is. If that, okay. All right. And I guess this is the part where unfortunately, uh, we're being brutally honest about what we've observed over the last two years. And, and there is input into all of this that, that has been provided by all of the members of our staff that have worked on this, again, over the course of two years. So the, the first issue that we see is, is that this operation is being cited in the Acton Public Safety Building. Obviously that's not a neutral location. That is, it's adjacent to the, um, to, to their police department. And by having a non-neutral site, we are concerned that, um, we will, that the, the goals of each of the communities is, is not the same. And that one community, namely Acton, uh, is, has a more favorable position in, in this particular endeavor. We would be, if we were to move forward, and we talked about this at the last Board of Directors meeting, is one of the things we would be looking for is at least an evaluation of other sites, particularly ones that, that may be a little more neutral. Obviously they would, they would be in one community or the other, but there, we believe that there are facilities that are, that may be suitable for this type of operation and may even provide for, may even better be able to provide for additional communities to enter into this district. One of the things that we're concerned about is that this, the footprint of this facility is fairly limited. So we may be able to add one community of similar size or two smaller, but, but trying to go to a four or five member district would be very difficult in this facility. And there are a lot of costs associated with, with starting up a, a facility. So we would like to at least look at potential, um, neutral, what we will call neutral sites. The second concern that has been raised is that we believe that the support for this endeavor has waned, we've called it waned. This was something that was started by our former town manager, both police chiefs in, police chief in Concord, police chief in Acton, and now the Acton Fire Chief, all original members of this group, they've all left or retired. So we have a new police chief. Our, our fire chief is, is the last man standing here with the original group. And, um, you know, we're just, there's been a, there's been a change on the board. We, we definitely know that if, or have a sense that if the vote happened a couple of months later, it probably, at the board level, it probably would have gone a different way. And to be perfectly frank, it's very difficult to advance something as significant as this initiative if we don't have the full support of this board in the community to do this. This is, this is a serious thing. I worked in another community where we were in a, in a different position, where we were looking at the need to add a second dispatcher on full-time to all shifts. And so the, the conversation and, and the analysis was based on foregoing future costs. Like we, we were able to join a district, receive a higher level of service at about the same cost that we were currently paying, even though we, we had more resources. That's not what's happening here. And we don't, we don't foresee that happening. So it's a different conversation and we need a, we need the full support of the board and the community to, to make this happen in an acceptable manner. And absent that, it makes it very difficult to move this forward because change, it, it's a big change and, and change is, is difficult for people. The third item that we identified is that we see from a financial perspective, the monetary benefits and upgrades are more favorable to the town of Acton. Um, and, and I've identified, uh, those, those different items here. So if you look in the report, there's an inventory of all of the equipment and software both of the communities had when the report was put together. And you can see that Acton's equipment and software is older than Concord's and closer to needing to be replaced than Concord's. So there is more, uh, immediate benefit to the town of Acton. The next one is, is particularly hard to mention, and maybe there would be pushback in Acton, but what I have been told and witnessed is that, that not all of the personnel on, on the Acton team are regularly participating in, in our meetings. I think that has improved over time, but we started putting this memo together back in January, maybe even before that. So we did, that was something that, that a member of the group felt was important to note at the time. The next point is that the available funding, you know, while it's great that the state has committed 1.7 million dollars, that is not, it's about half of what we think is needed at this point to move the project available, uh, to move the project forward. And we're not sure about additional funding. I think the state has been very good at providing funding to regional dispatch centers, but we don't have a commitment. We have asked to modify our fiscal 23 grant to move some things around. And that modification is on hold, as is our fiscal 24 grant award. And obviously you, you can imagine that the state is, is looking at us where they've, they've allocated 1.7 and we spent 75,000 in, in two years. So they're, you know, they're questioning what we are doing. What I would say is that we would be moving much faster and in a, a much better direction if we had a director. Right now, we have a group of staff members that are advancing this initiative. They all have other jobs to be doing. And, um, having a director would, would move things along faster. We don't, we don't have one. We're not going to restart that search until we hear from this board in, in what it would like us to do. And I think the, the last thing that I'll mention is that Concord's interest in joining this rec was only ever as a full member to a district and not, not a member of a hosted facility and, and, and what I, or a hosted service. What I mean here is that we are partners in a district, we have an equal vote in what happens with the district versus the town of Acton providing a service that it contracts with other communities and, and, and other communities pay an assessment. So where Concord is the, uh, excuse me, where Acton is the, uh, we're following, using their protocol and their, and their practices. And I think because we don't have a director and because Acton is the lead community at the, from a grant perspective, that it often feels that Acton is the lead community. And there are times where that seems more evident and it is uncomfortable to me and to other staff members. I, I do think we can overcome that, but that means moving forward and, and hiring a director and, um, and, and things like that. So at this point in time, we see three options available to us. First, first is essentially status quo. We could continue along the same path, um, trying to make progress. We would at least need to address the housekeeping items in the intermunicipal agreement, which I don't think are deal breakers, but there are the things that need to be cleaned up. But we would need to create a strategic plan and obtain support to, to move forward. The second option is we could initiate steps to withdraw from the district in accordance with section nine of the intermunicipal agreement. In, in doing so, we would need to identify any liabilities, legal or financial result from termination. Section nine of the IMA says that, that any with, any community withdrawing needs to provide three years notice. Obviously that's more for, if, if the district was up and running, uh, right now. I'm not sure how that would play out, but there is a potential that there are liabilities, either financial or legal, and we would need to, to take a look at those.
But we would have some leverage there because we have an equal vote on the Board of Directors of the, of the organization.
To, to accept a withdrawal?
Well, no, to actually, uh, not have anything move forward. And that would be, that would be an unfortunate, um, kind of way to manipulate it. But it's, um, it, it would be the ultimate, um, means that we could to negotiate a separation.
That's correct. So then the, the final alternative that we've identified is given the delay in timing, and that's resulting from, um, the request to have input from this board, that we could reassess the district membership and the location of the regional center. We could identify a path forward and perhaps additional partners. So what is different now versus 2021 is we are aware of other communities that are interested in regionalizing dispatch, communities that weren't necessarily known to us or interested in this back in 2021 or even 2022. So we could have a meeting, invite some of our neighbors and see if there is interest in forming a true district, not a two-member district, but a, a district of maybe three, four, five communities. We probably wouldn't want to go any bigger. Uh, we wouldn't necessarily be looking for everybody to commit to, to come on at the same time, but to know that, that there are additional, um, communities out there that are interested in working with us to stand up a regional district. We'd also neutral sites and evaluate them for potential suitability if we, if we chose this option. What I also wanted to mention, which I know was included in the report, is I think when we, when we started initially, we thought we would be standing this district up maybe beginning of fiscal 24, and then it kept getting pushed. Now we're looking at, um, about the time of the 250th celebration, which obviously is not a time that we would be able to stand up this facility. So we're looking at maybe late summer 2025, fall 2025. So we believe we have some time to be able to assess whether or not we have some additional partners who would be interested. And that's why we identified that as a particular, um, option that is available. What I will say in closing again is we need the support of the board in order to move forward. We have endless initiatives that we are working on. We have MBTA community zoning. We're entering into a very large discussion with MWRA about, uh, long-term water resources. We have the housing production plan. We have the 300 Baker Ave project. Somebody mentioned the Munis ERP launch this evening. We are in the fire department in fiscal 24, looking at the feasibility of a paramedic level ambulance service. Capital planning, we've talked about capital planning, we need to do more there. There really are a lot of initiatives and we don't have the, despite our best intentions, we don't have the time or the bandwidth to work on things that don't have broad support. It is, being a dispatcher is a very difficult job. It's very demanding, um, difficult work environment. And it's hard for us to retain and attract candidates if they're coming here and they don't know what their long-term future is. They don't know, are we, are we going to be here for a few years and then go, go to a district? They're really in limbo and there are other places that they could go that they're not working in that limbo. Obviously if we move forward with the district, we have to be able to communicate with the dispatchers and let them know, but they, they would know that on such, here's the path forward, here's what we're looking to do with, and be able to talk to them with a certain amount of assurance. And so, um, again, we're, we're just looking to hear from the board and we're looking for a strong commitment if there's an interest in moving forward with this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of the board members have any comments?
Henry? As liaison, I just want to clarify two brief points. First of all, uh, you're correct about your phrase of two and a half votes. I was the swing vote. And I believe that regional dispatch is really terrific in theory. It has a lot of theoretical benefits, but I was very unsure at the time about this specific arrangement. And I finally decided to vote for it and hope it worked out. And in the two years that we've tried to have it work out, I'm not sure if it's working. So, um, that is why Kerry is correct. I did ask to put a hold on the hiring of the executive director. Because once you take that step, you're, you're really, you know, more committed than we are now. I wanted to check in with this, we have a new board, a new town manager, new police and fire chiefs in both towns. It was time to take a check before we make that step of hiring the executive director. So I thank Kerry for excellent, uh, synopsis of it and look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
Linda's got her hand up.
Okay, Lingo?
Yeah. So clearly this is a difficult situation and I do appreciate the forthrightness in terms of what's come forward. Even with the recommendations that have been laid before us in terms of if we do go forward, we need full select board support. It seems to me that there are some very complicated pieces here and I need to start with a couple of questions, I guess. Can someone remind me, um, hadn't Acton, um, renovated their facility to make this available initially? Am I remembering that correctly?
So part of this has to do
So part of this has to do with Acton. The grants that were received through 911 and this whole project was so Acton could renovate their facility. They are all new furniture, all new consoles, all new stations, all new CAD RMS system. That all came through the 911 grant setting this stuff up.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, the, and I do appreciate that three different options have been laid out. But as I listened to how this is, and read the memo, and as I listened to how this is being presented, I really hear more than anything, very strong reservations about continuing with or without select board support. That, that's my takeaway as I'm listening to this. Do you think that is an accurate assessment of where people are coming from at this point?
Linda, I would say that is an accurate, uh, representation that we, we do have reservations. It doesn't mean that we aren't willing with, with support from the board to move this forward, but you can see that we've made very little progress in two years where we have both groups, the board of directors and the operations group are meeting on a regular basis. So it's not for lack of funding. It's not for lack of meetings, but we, we are not making the kind of progress that we need to, to justify spending this amount of time.
Yeah. And, um, so as you, um, have said on multiple times tonight, with the full support of the board, we would be willing to go forward. And I guess, um, I'm sitting here trying to conjecture what that really means. Does it mean that we stand behind? We've heard aspects of the uneven relationship here and how they need to be corrected if we're going to have a, a good working relationship going forward. And I'm assuming that that's what you mean by, uh, we would be willing to go forward if we had full board support, meeting support you on those items. Is that also a fair interpretation?
Yes. I, I, I mean, in terms of numbers, I, I don't think it makes sense for us to continue if we've got another three to two vote and in another year we have an election and we may, you know, it may swing again, like I believe it did after the election preceding the first vote. I don't mean to speak for anybody, but I think it may have changed.
Okay. Um, and, and if, if I may, just a couple more things here. I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my arms around this because I think first and foremost, we want to be supportive of our own staff. Given the, uh, amount of energy and so forth that they have put into this, and I'm, I'm referring to dispatch, our, you know, our leadership in, in the public safety departments a, as well as the town manager's office. So what do you mean by a neutral, what would, what in your mind would constitute a neutral location that might make this easier?
Uh, one, one that is not attached to the public safety, police, fire building in either Acton or Concord. You know, there, there are other buildings in Acton that we think are potential sites that are, um, you know, that we would see as more neutral. There are, there are some sites in Concord that, that may, uh, work as well. But one that is directly attached to either town's public safety building is not going to be neutral.
But by putting, by putting it in a neutral site, what you're giving up is one of the big advantages that we have in having the dispatch be in our public safety building. So, you know, it, once you take it out of where it is now, is you've lost a lot of the value that we have right now. And so being neutral, it may make it more equal, but it makes it equally bad for both.
If you, if you accept the premise that, that somehow that particular aspect of regionalizing dispatch is, is not worth the other benefits that are, that are accrued from regionalizing dispatch. I think, I think the point's well taken that, that by having all of the communities participate equally in a shared structure for which they all have an equal level of interest in its success, its maintenance and, and there's something to be said for that. Uh, I have a couple of sort of first principles questions that I'd be interested in, in briefly covering just for context is, um, given our, our dispatch arrangements today, I'm wondering how, how long before we might recognize the need for additional staffing, additional space? And, and I'm thinking about how that might factor into our ongoing discussions about, uh, you know, a new public safety facility or building. I mean, obviously if we had a regionalized system, we would take some requirements away from that, but you know, what are we going to run out of first? Just, just public safety facilities in the first place or dispatching capacity?
Let me start with the first part. So the way 911, the, it's not a mandate, but it's a suggestion is that they recommend that you have at least two dispatches on every shift. So we started working towards that probably three, four, five years ago. And at one point we had, we were getting to that level. The idea behind that is it's, it is a safety concern. It's so this checks and balances, there's a number of factors that go into it. So our current dispatch center is set up that way. We actually have a third position. If we need to have another body come in, whether that be a supervisor, an officer, another dispatcher. And we've had calls for that over the years. I'll go back a dozen years and talk about the power outage that affected the whole town and those phones went non-stop. So there, there is always going to be that need. Um, in terms of moving forward into a new public safety complex, if the dispatch center itself was regionalized, it opens the door to have what some places do, have a walk-in lobby where you could have, say, your records department there, you could have your community services offices there, whatever you choose to have in there. You have fire services, a fire services officer in there. So you could have that interaction and cover that. Would that necessarily be staffed 24/7? I don't have a vision of that in my head, but it's something that could be discussed and that could be figured out. If you talk about building a new public safety complex and incorporating, keeping dispatch to Concord, then you have to factor that in. There are some models out there that talk about having that removed from the public's eye. So it's not necessarily interfered with when it comes to them actually taking on the role of dispatching and call taking and all that. So they're not getting interfered with by having that walk-in traffic to the lobby. So there's a lot of, I'm saying is a lot of different factors that come into play.
Okay. And how would the, sorry, it sounds like you wanted to add something, Tom.
Yeah, I do. Um, I just wanted to, um, kind of piggyback on what Lieutenant just said. I understand that one of the advantages to the current system or layout is that we have, you know, uh, two people in there and there's somebody to, to be at the window and greet people coming in. Um, that is actually one of the reasons, one of a number of reasons why I support this because I would really prefer as a fire chief, I would prefer that the, that the public safety dispatchers, the 911 operators are focusing their attention to 911 and radio traffic and not having to deal with the window. This is, um, it, it's interesting for me because I started, um, I'm going to, I'm going to quickly say, I started here as a dispatcher in 1983. Now I'm going to quickly add for the dispatchers in the audience who are groaning that it is not the same job. It is not the same job. I never did the job that these folks do. What I can tell you is that the job I did has evolved into a profession. And the, the folks that are doing this job are professional, but they're still doing a lot of those same ancillary things that we were doing in 1983, when it was kind of an emerging thing. And I, I just, I, I'd, I'd like, I would like to see the focus being on, on what, what our ultimate goal was. Our ultimate goal, my goal, and I think Chief O'Connor's goal at the time. Ultimately it's, it's, it's about the safety of the people working in the street. And the, the more people that we can have focused on an incident, the safer it makes it for firefighters, the safer it makes it for police officers. That is 100% all it comes down to for me. I don't care where it is. I don't care what zip code it's in. I agree 100% with what Carrie said, but I think that outside of any police station or outside of any fire station is probably the best location. But in terms of the town it resides in, it just, it doesn't matter. Um, so thank you.
So my other question kind of goes to the project origins and by way of context, I recall going to an MMA presentation on regional dispatch when I was serving on the finance committee and, and at that point, which was, you know, probably getting close to 20 years from now, so the information could be dated. They were thinking that a regional center needed about 60,000 lives to, to really be a full function regional center. And I recognize that Concord and Acton together don't quite add up to 60,000. And I'm wondering just how does the size of this proposed, this, this current arrangement compare to other regional centers that are, that are considered to be, um, operating well at the moment? Are we the same size or smaller or, or, or larger? Are there examples that have been, that have been working and how would we compare, would we to go forward here?
I'm sorry, did you say 60,000?
60, 60,000. In other words, the, the catchment area for the person who was doing this contained 60,000 residents, 60,000 lives of people. So, you know, generally speaking, about a third or, you know, larger than, than what Acton and Concord are together. Yeah.
He's just saying.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah. So I think that's a, I, I, I think at some point, um, I don't, I don't know 100%. Uh, but I think at some point that probably is a statistic that people rely on. But one thing that I think that that doesn't factor in is things like when we start talking about call volume. I mean, we're, we're a community with a population hovering around 20,000 people, but we're a fire department that does 4,000 calls a year. That's, that's a very high number for a population like we have. So population doesn't always, isn't always the best indicator, you know? Where we are situated and with the target hazards we have and the infrastructure we have and the modes of transportation, the, um, the fact that we have the local hospital and all of the, all of the, um, medical services that come with geographically around it. Um, we have a very high call volume for a department our size and a population our size. So I think that that's a, um, relying, relying exclusively on, on, uh, on population can be deceiving.
Yeah. So my question really was, how would the size of this regional center compare to other regional centers that are operating successfully? And if you wanted to do it based on the expected call volume versus how many people were being covered by it, that would be fine. I'm just trying to understand, would we, and you know, going forward with Acton together be smaller than average or, or, you know, would we achieve the critical mass that gets the kind of benefits that people envision when they have a regional center?
I think it's going more by call volume, not so much by the population size. What you're seeing is, and what's been pushed out by state 911, is you've seen these regional centers pop up all over the state. There's been a big push. They see it as a benefit in terms of, um, strategizing and streamlining services. That seems to be the big push. And this has been going on probably for at least a dozen plus years now. So that, that's the first thing that's taken into account. You've got regional centers down in, um, Foxborough. You've got them out in, outside of Ashby. That's the one out there. You've got the one up in Essex County. So it's a combination of area towns. And with the demographics involved, that's what's bringing the area towns in. And to Carrie's point, maybe Acton isn't the best partner. Maybe there's other communities out there would make more sense, but in a standalone structure. So we're not, it's not attached to any, any police department. So there's not that, I use the word favoritism given because it's in that, it's housed within that PD. And it also, if it's in a standalone structure, it gives it the opportunity to grow and expand because you've got the room to do that. You're not going to get that with Acton.
And I, I think, um, I think Mark, maybe the simple answer to the question I think you're asking is what is being discussed, whatever format it's in, whatever building it's in. The, the proposed number of people, um, versus population and, and call volume, we are not outside the bell curve.
So do we have the ability to proceed with a regional call center without Acton? In other words, or does that mean starting all over again? So if we were to go, go down that road where if we say, this is the right idea, we want a regional, we want a regional operation, but the thing with Acton isn't, just isn't working. Does that mean going back to square one?
So I, I guess what I would say is I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we would move forward without Acton. But that we would prefer to move forward with Acton and other partners to create a district.
But it would be very different from the direction in which we've been going. In other words, it would not be in the Acton Police Station.
Correct.
And that's, makes it a totally different deal, doesn't it?
Well, it makes it a, a, a more of a service bureau than, uh, sort of a bilateral partnership that has and, and what I, what I read was that what we're headed towards is essentially being hosted by Acton.
Right.
And that's might work in some situations, but has some potentially important drawbacks. And what I was also explaining, exploring was the, the likelihood that it would be not only useful from a administrative or an executive balance perspective, but also potentially from a service level perspective. If the, if the regional center involved a larger volume of calls, catchment area, number of communities, because that would, then it would have more resources right from the start. So maybe, maybe it needs to be a different arrangement that, you know, is sort of along the lines of her, of the third option, which says, let's, let's find some other partners. If there really are other communities that are looking to do this, um, maybe we bring them together and, and then go forward with Acton as well.
But that sounds like a lot of work, doesn't it?
It does. It does. It's not quick.
I, I have a question. So, um, first of all, I do, Terry made a good point that these things should make sense, but I really respect that you gave us the full honest, your honest appraisal of what's, what's happening here. And this doesn't feel like a good fit, the way it's moving forward. The three options you gave us would be to continue, uh, to withdraw or to reassess, um, how we could get maybe more towns or a neutral site, if I, if I understand. Okay. But to reassess, one of the things I heard you say is that this year we've got so much on our plate to do and so much we're demanding from our staff. So how could, do we have the energy to actually reassess or would we need to hire the executive director, which by hiring the executive director, we're actually continuing. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering, um, is reassess, I mean, it's the middle way, so it's always feels good, but is it realistic to think that we can do that? Or should we really just decide whether we want to move forward or not?
Well, that, that's, that's a good question. I, I think we would be willing to, to reach out to other communities and, and try. Yes, we do have a lot of priorities. Um, I think what, what we've generally agreed on is we're not interested in moving forward on the path that we've been on for the last two years because it's not fruitful. But because I, we all believe that a regional dispatch facility can work, that it provides a better level of service, that it can provide that better level of service without an additional financial commitment from the town. We are willing to spend some amount of time talking to our partners to see if there's an interest. If there isn't any interest, I think we would be coming back and saying, you know what? There, there isn't any interest. We're not willing to move forward here. And Henry, to answer the, you asked a question, if we moved forward without Acton, would be, would we be starting over? Yes, essentially, we would be starting over because we would have to file an application to get grant funding for a different project from the state. So that, that would be starting over. And I don't even know if we could file in '24. We probably would be looking at '25.
There's an option to maybe move forward with Acton with the understanding that we're going to look for a third or maybe a fourth partner that, and, and an off-site facility that, that is capable of housing everyone in one of the member communities? Is that, is, is that a, is that a route we could take? I don't know theoretically.
Is that essentially option three?
It is. It is. It's just, who would, who would do that, I guess? And would there be a time limit on it to say, we're going to go back to Acton and say, this is how we would like to move forward and get their feel? And then who would actually do that?
So we've, I mean, I, I suggested six months. I, I don't know if that's, that's reasonable. That's not necessarily a timetable that we talked about. But I would say at, at least the last two monthly board meetings, we have talked about additional partners, a different facility that came up at the last, at the last meeting. Acton is, at the risk of speaking for Acton, Acton is interested in continuing. I think Acton is, the, the, my colleague on the board is very interested in continuing to the point where he's willing to have the conversation about additional communities and, and a different site.
You, you think that they would be, there's a possibility that they would be interested in participating even if it wasn't their facility?
Based on what I've heard at meetings, yes. I, I do believe that.
So if we want to go forward and reassess this, I think it would be important not to get in deeper into what we, into the current arrangement. In other words, hiring personnel and so on, so that it would just become even more difficult to disentangle ourselves if that was the choice we were going to make, even, either if we were going to not go forward with a regional center, or if we decided we wanted to do it with, say, you know, Lincoln and Carlisle, for instance, instead of Acton. We, we wanted to keep those options open. We certainly don't want to make it harder to disentangle ourselves from the relationship with Acton.
So again, I, I just want to mention, we're, we're not talking about something not with Acton, that we, we are looking at Acton and other communities. And I think we could agree on some period of time. Maybe the two of you could tell me if six months is a reasonable timetable or not. I think we could do that due diligence without, you know, without hiring a director, because we would be, we would be looking for partners and sites.
That sounds reasonable to me.
So if we're going to go forward for six months, I think it'd be good to define what it is that we expect to have happen during that time.
That would be very helpful, yes.
I think, does it make sense for us to be in communication with Acton Select Board to understand what their view is of this arrangement?
We'd have to speak one-on-one with, I mean, it couldn't hurt, I don't think, for us to reach out to them one-on-one. What do you think, Kerry?
I would think if you want to do that, I would suggest that one of you reach out to a member of the Acton Select Board. There, there is, I mean, assuming that Terry is, is, is the liaison to the board.
Yep.
Terry knows who her counterpart in Acton is, who, who is also the liaison of the, the board member who is participating in the discussions.
So.
Well, I, I would comment that if you, if you're talking about Select and Dean Charter, he, I think is very much in favor of continuing and objected when I recommended that we hold on the director hiring.
Kerry, do you think he's, do you think he's open to bringing more communities in or finding a neutral site?
I don't know. I guess I could sign out.
Yeah, I think that's what we're, I, I, I think what I'm hearing, if I could try to sum up, is that we would like to have a conversation with Acton to see if they're open to bringing in more communities and having a neutral site, give that a specific amount of time, let's say, six months on the outside, and then revisit where we are. Does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, I think it's, it's important that we try to address the concerns that Steph is raising.
Yes.
About this. I, I think that, that's, it's always easier to do that in the design phases and in the planning phases than it is once something is being implemented.
You have a public comment.
I, I'd just like to add that, you know, it's encouraging that, that you're considering doing the extension of time to consider this and maybe look for a neutral site and bring in some additional towns.
Yes.
But I think that, you know, potentially some of those towns might be, you know, paying close attention to what, to what's happening. And it would be very helpful to understand that we do have support at the end of those six months if we identify some viable partners and, and a neutral location. Some, because some of, you know, some of the communities that may be interested are, they're currently looking for partners. And if they think that we might be an iffy partner,
Yep.
then they could potentially just go elsewhere.
Thank you. Very briefly, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. I'm a little concerned about waiting for six months because the extension period for the fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 grants will expire in June of 2024. I've been watching this committee since its formation, and I can see that there's some differences in the management styles between the two towns. I would think that having an executive director would smooth that out. But a six-month period of time, I think, might jeopardize the funding, the state funding that we currently have, but from the State 911 Board. And that doesn't even count the fiscal year '24 funding that, that has not yet been released, because they're waiting for us to make up the mind of whether we're going to go forward and under what conditions. So think about the six-month period as being too long perhaps, because of the timeframe for the extension of the $1.67 million that has already been allocated to this project. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, are we?
Well, could I make a suggestion, following on what Mary said? What, what if you ask your liaison to reach out to the town of Acton and relay the discussion this evening and say, letting them know that if they would be willing to allow a six-month extension to seek additional partners, would, would the town of Acton be willing to follow that process? I, I do think we, we need to get an answer to the, the question that Carlin Reed just mentioned. We could, we could do that in the next couple of weeks. If, if you want to put this back on for July 10th, just for a quick check-in to confirm that.
An update on July 10th. We'll have two, two pieces, two more pieces of information.
If we could get something that would be more like an unequivocal answer to that question, but we could also see what, what we do get if we ask the question. And then we can, we can decide how, you know, what substance that answer has.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. Well, and to the lieutenant's point, I think there, there are sort of two, two issues that can be pursued separately that address the, the main things that you've mentioned. One is sort of the, the issue of, of hosted at a, at a neutral facility. And, you know, to the extent that the, the business case for this was predicated on, it's already in a buil-, building that's already owned. And so there were costs and effect and benefits to Acton that were, that might disappear if, or at least be modified if it were at a neutral facility. I would probably think that, well, I'd be influenced by if Acton said, sure, we'll, we'll do it in another facility too, so that we can be equal partners. That would, that would go a long way towards addressing at least, I think, an important part of the concerns that we have. Whether, and of course, it would leave open the opportunity, the easier opportunity for expansion should another partner appear. So I would imagine that, you know, a joint Concord-Acton facility that was, that was up and running someplace that was easily expandable would also be more attractive to other partners. So maybe this is by way of, you know, communicating to our own liaison what message it is. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a both. It could be, are you interested in one or the other? And, and do you see that happening? Kind of question to Acton.
So can we just then, without taking a vote now, carry it forward to our next meeting? If Terry is able to contact her counterpart and come back to us with an initial response to our concerns about the participation in the district and the relocation of the district?
Right, so I'm, I'm certainly willing to reach out to him right away. Hopefully, he's not on a long vacation out of the country or something. But let me make sure that I have my marching instructions correct. I'm supposed to have a conversation with him and find out if he thinks Acton would be open to bringing in more communities and to having the rec, be located in a neutral site. Is that correct?
Correct. I think. Am I right? Yes.
And that might even be an and/or. Open to other communities and/or having it in a neutral site.
I think it's and.
I thought it was and.
It is and.
Kerry's memo was pretty much an and. Kerry's email was and.
And then at the same time, we will reach out to the State E911 to inquire about the status of, of grant funding if we have a six-month, an additional six-month delay in.
And there's nothing much sacred about six months. It could be four or three, perhaps, if we could get whatever was necessary to get done.
Yeah, I, I would say, understanding the, the speed, the relative speed at which these discussions move forward. I, I think six months is something that is needed.
Okay, well, molasses moves faster in the summer, though.
So we're deciding to revisit this on July 10th. If, if Terry can get in touch with Dean and if, and, and then we revisit it to see, based on their reaction, whether we want to continue or withdraw.
All right.
Yes. Okay.
I think we've.
Thank you. That was.
Beat this to death, haven't we? Okay.
It was a good discussion.
It was. Thank you, Kerry. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Tom. Running.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay. All right. Well, it's getting awfully late, isn't it?
It is getting awfully late, but let's keep going. Okay?
Sure.
Next on the agenda is the Solar Implementation Task Force.
The what?
The Solar Implementation.
Ah, yes. Very important, yes. Charge. That was, that's description, not a, an order.
So I'll, I'll say things about this. I think you've got enough in your packet. You've seen the draft of the charge that I've written and you've seen the memo that I prefaced that with. I think the town is impatient to get some solar installations done. And the purpose, if simply put, the purpose of the task force is to identify obstacles in the way of making that happen and to find out how we can address those concerns. One of the things that I learned from the homework that I did to write this charge is that there's a lot of support for a task force. But I think if I had a proposal in front of us for an actual installation, that would create quite a bit of discussion among the community. So the charge for the task force is really to identify people's concerns, to listen to people's concerns and to find out ways that we can address those so that we can in fact move forward with solar installations in town.
And the task force makes no decisions. It only makes recommendations.
That's correct. So with that, I guess I'll open it up for questions. Linda's got her hand up.
Linda, your hand, your hand is up.
Yep, thank you very much. Mary, thank you as always for the good work you did on this. Just a couple comments I'd like to make on.
Yep.
Where you talk about membership, and I think it gets dealt with on both the first and second page. You talk about liaison from the one of the committees.
Climate Action Committee?
Exactly. And I'm wondering if you really intended to say a representative appointed or selected by the Climate Action Committee as opposed to using the word liaison?
Actually, it is, it is a representative appointed by the committee, so you're right.
Yeah, so I think that, 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 if you agree with that, that maybe is in both the first and second page to catch that. Then the other thing is, I've had a couple of comments brought to my attention from people who are generally supportive of, and, and of how this charge was written.
Yep.
But had concerns that have to do with conservation, allowing the expiration of solar siting on conservation land. And I think there's a phrase that talks about on town land and goes on to say, and conservation land and other restricted land. I believe it's on the second page. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me right, right this minute. And, 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 and the comments that came to my attention were that people would feel more comfortable if it said explore, however the wording goes, on town land and end it there, as opposed to on conservation land and, and other restricted land. And the, the rationale that people are using is that there is, conservation land is already under so many attacks in terms of us needing to protect them, that they felt that they were not in support of those additional phrases. So, you know, that's, that's, I'm bringing that to your attention and, and making that recommendation. The other comment that's come to my attention has to do with, and we've heard this on other charges as well, people needing, feeling that projects such as this should be on open land, currently open land, sited on open land or in, in the interest of minimizing tree removal. And so I, you know, I think some discussion and consideration needs should be given to that. So those are my three comments, but in all, I thought, as always, this was excellent work, so thank you.
Can, can I address that, Linda? Can I address that? Linda, I think, um, I think those are good points and I think you're articulating things that people in the community concerns they have, but that's the actual intent of the task force is to listen to those and to balance them and consider them. And I'm afraid that if I put them in here, I would already be restricting the task force work. In other words, the main point is to discover obstacles and find out ways to address them. And I don't want to impose more obstacles in the charge. Do you know what, do you hear what I'm saying?
I do hear what you're saying. Having said that, however, um, you know, sometimes the, the choice of how we, you've already laid out, um, three areas, particularly for, you know, the conservation land, restricted comfort line, whatever. So sometimes, um, I'm, I'm concerned that, that I'm, I'm concerned that the, um, that the purpose of the task force in, as you're stating it, is to really explore those objections.
Right.
That that is not balanced by some of the wording in, in these two sections. So that's just.
What do other people think?
Yeah.
I, I tend to lean in, in Mary's direction on this one. I think that there's, there's value, we're, we're not on a path to getting enough solar for, to meet the town's needs. And, um, so I feel like we're, we're trying to handle a, a task force to, to really look at, at as, as, at as many options as are, are available. I would like to think that, that such a task force would also help us with criteria for understanding the relative impact and, you know, trade offs for using any given site. There always are going to be impacts and trade offs for, for any site that's selected. And I think that there's, there's a need to really, I read this as, as, as saying, you know, dig deep, don't just, don't just pass on something because it has, because it has a label or, or looks inconvenient or, or might be difficult and maybe look at parts of parcels and things like that, 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 um, it might be benefit official because I, I'm very concerned that the results of this effort might end up similar to the last couple of efforts to locate solar sites, which are, you know, sorry, not available. So I'm hoping that we're putting out a positive challenge to try and get with the, the overall spirit of the, these last two attempts by town meeting to say, um, when are we going to have a plan to build more solar in town?
So Mark, I think you, you've made some good points. Can some, Mary, can you remind me, do we ask the task force to delineate the impacts of their recommendations?
No.
So.
Well, we do, we have some to convene public forums to identify issues and develop possible solutions related to obstacles to solar projects.
And we ask them to prioritize a list based on certain criteria. And one of those is community neighborhood acceptance, um, integration with strategic plans, any other technical considerations. So I, I think, you know, again, I think that we're asking the task force to do the work to go out and find out what are, what are the obstacles and, and listen to them and come back to us with recommendations.
Okay. Do we have any other comments on this, Tanya? We do have your letter.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have found it more in this discussion, Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. And, um, it makes a lot of sense, um, that the task force would look into all sorts of different, uh, factors and obstacles. But, um, it is, um, because the overwhelming support at town meeting was, as I mentioned in my letter, did include a provision about open sites and minimizing tree removal or having hearings about tree removal. Perhaps that could at least be mentioned in the charge that, that at the town meeting, the recommendation included favoring open sites and minimizing tree removal or having tree removal things. And, and perhaps the chart, task force would keep that in mind in making their assessment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Banfield, Dan.
Hi, Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I want to commend Mary for the work she's done. It's a, it's a good, it's a good bit of work and she's, you know, she had more, she had to actually turn away people who wanted to be on this task force. So thank you, Mary, for all the effort you put in, putting this together. Generally speaking, I, I think she's done a fine job. There's just a small edge issue here that I, I want to address and we can put it to bed, but I'm, I have to speak my piece here. When I crafted this, I was very careful, uh, to think through how many members and what the membership would be. And that has not been, uh, adhered to. I understand that the select board has every right to, it's just, it's just an urge to create this, so they have every right to, you know, over, override what town meeting voted unanimously for, and there were no voices raised at all about this issue. So the original, uh, article asked for a five person panel. Your committee is five, you get input from all over the town, you have to figure out what the town's various views are. So it's not clear why we had to expand the membership beyond what was originally stated in the article. So that's one issue is why did we expand? And the other, the other issue is, I specifically thought through, uh, whether or not the light board ought to be literally have a seat at the table. Now this happens, it's not, it's not, it's not like I'm making stuff up out of whole cloth. We, we built a, a middle, we're building a middle school for the first three quarters of its existence, the middle school building committee had multiple town staff members on it with votes. Now we're down to just Lori Hunter, who's the only one left because it's been reconfigured. But I, I really feel as though one of the issues that has plagued the town is that these committees have been stood up, reports have been written, they've been shelved and the light board's not, they're not bought in, they're not engaged enough to follow through, um, not the light board, the light plant itself. So if the light plant is on the committee and has an actual vote, they have to be on the record, they have to be engaged. And I, I, the way it's configured now, I don't doubt that they would be engaged with, Laura Scott, who's been proposed. I, I don't doubt they would be engaged, but I thought through this and thought, I think that they should be, I think they should sit at the table and have a vote. And that's not part of what, the way it's been configured. Otherwise, I, I'm perfectly happy with the way Mary's written this out. It's fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you very much, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. Thanks for, um, uh, uh, charge and, um, I think it's important to explore all possibilities. I just want to take this opportunity to make two comments. Whether it's in the charge or not, I hope that the, the task force will consider the impact of various construction projects for solar energy, the impact on natural systems that provide, you know, all kinds of benefits in terms of biodiversity, um, uh, mitigating the effects of extreme rain events, heat islands, things like that. You know, which involves removal of trees or covering over natural conservation areas. Second comment, so anyway, I just hope that the task force, whether it's in their charge or not, they'll take that into account. The other thing, um, in preparing like, uh, matrices of, um, you know, matrix of pros and cons and, uh, for evaluation. The second thing I wanted to just pass on is that there was a comment about, um, encouraging the task force to find ways to overcome opposition of the community. And I felt, I, that struck me as a little funny because I thought it is the community that wants this, the, you know, the right balance, uh, of these things to help with, getting solar energy, clean solar energy, but also preserving other, uh, good things. So, you know, that read to me a little bit like higher public relations firm to sell something, uh, against community opposition. So I just wanted to pass on those observations. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, are you ready to, uh, take some action on this?
It's now. Are we? Okay, um, I moved to approve the, wait, I gotta get my thing? Move to approve the solar implementation task force as included in the select board meeting packet with one adjustment, which is to change the designation of the, um, Climate Action Committee liaison to designated representative.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay.
Letter to about Hanscom.
We now have the, um,
Letter.
Hanscom letter. And, um, uh, I don't know whether that calls for any action as such.
Well, well, yes. I think it does actually, um, um, so, um, just very briefly, um, to remind you, um, at our last meeting, um, the board asked me to do an initial draft, which I did using what you recommended, which was the letters from the Lincoln Select Board on the MIPA, the Concord Select Board's MIPA. Dan Schreger had some excellent points in his letter and Save Our Heritage. And I basically consolidated a lot of those and put together an initial draft, which you have. Then, as Linda exclaimed, at the HATS meeting, the chair, Doug Lucenti, started the meeting pretty much by saying that he favored a joint letter by all four towns. So to save time, I raised my hand and said that I had done an initial draft at your request, but that it hadn't been discussed or reviewed yet by the sport. Several of the other, um, members said they were meeting tonight in their boards, so they wanted to have this draft. Which Linda and I agreed to, um, clearly stating that it had not been discussed yet publicly. So tonight, as we speak, there's at least one board, I think it might be Lincoln, and then there's another one later this week. Meanwhile, the chair, Doug Lucenti, put together the second draft, which I think he did an excellent job and it's a big improvement over my initial draft. So altogether, there's a couple of things I'm looking for. The first one is, I was looking for comments from this board because we think it will take probably two cycles for each of the four towns to go through their boards and to get a final joint letter. And we need to finish by August. Because September is when things are really going to gear up and we need to get the letter in front of the governor before Labor Day. So I'd like two things from this board, one, your comments on the letters. And, um, secondly, whether you'd like me to continue working with Doug Lucenti, to, um, keep working on the drafts, get it back to you and get, help get the final letter together.
Well, I have three comments on the letter, if you're soliciting comments. And I don't know, I don't think that it's possible for a committee to really write a letter, but I think number one, I think it's a mistake to take head on the general aviation industry. Arouses an opposition that is not necessary. I think number two, that it, even though the basis of our complaint is the general impact on the environment, I think the real appeal of our, of, of our comments on this comes from the unique, from the unique, um, assets that this particular area represents and how those particular assets may be affected. I think our initial thought was that that made it seem like it was kind of self-centered, but the fact is that the assets that this town has, historical, environmental, the Audubon Society, the National Park and so on, give a special standing and those should be an asset and not be ignored. Then it's, then we tie those to the overall general, um, environmental issues. The third thing is that it lists a number of, a number of actions that we're asking the governor to take, which we know that cannot be taken because we have already been informed that once the facility is built, only the FAA has control over what activities actually take place in those facilities. And so I think it's, it sounds uninformed for us to ask the governor to take actions that we know not only the governor cannot take, but the state cannot take once the facility is built. So, um, those are my, my comments on it. I also think that because we're in the process of negotiating a relationship with an environmental lawyer who, who, we still don't have a proposal yet, do we, Carrie?
I believe it came in today.
Oh, that we haven't seen, um, that it might be wise to run some, if, if, if the arrangement seems satisfactory and we are willing to go forward with that arrangement, it might be really helpful to have that, that attorney who was very, uh, uh, very highly regarded environmental expert, uh, to review such a letter, uh, for its, um, not only for, you know, um, persuasive value, but also for the, the technical issues. Because ultimately, I think what this is going to come down to is a, 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 a focus on some of the technical environmental issues, uh, rather than the, uh, the, rather than the political issues. But, you know, that's, that's just one man's opinion. Mark?
So I'm, I'm supportive of the notion of going forward with the other towns. And I think there, there's room for a letter from us as an individual town as well. So I, I think that we should continue with, with the dialogue with HATS, getting something that we can agree to that focuses potentially on the more regional and potentially the larger targets of, of, um, what this type of aviation represents as, as a climate threat. I do think though, there's room to make some of these, some of the points that Henry was just referring to around the, the direct impact, uh, on Concord. Certainly those of us that live under the flight path are recognizing just the direct impact of a runway repaving project over the last six weeks. And what that, that has done, and I think that's just a sort of little indicator of things to come if something like this ends up happening. What we've been experiencing over the last few weeks in terms of, um, air traffic is, is probably the only beginning, only the beginning of, if Massport is allowed to do a project like this. I think, I, I worry about the fact that if they, if they get this project done, how long will it be before there's another hangar expansion and even more aviation?
There's no question that we want to oppose this very vigorously. The question is how we can be most effective.
I think our strategy should include, um, going forward with the other towns and reaching compromise over that letter, um, which I thought was generally well constructed and, and also, um, as that comes together, potentially drafting a, a more focused individual letter on, on impacts to Concord specifically. as that comes together, potentially drafting a more focused individual letter on impacts to Concord specifically.
Mary?
Yes, I support the joint letter with the other HATS communities. In that letter, I would downplay this.
Mary, I can't really hear you.
Sorry, Terry, I turned my mic off. I I do support the fact that we send out a joint letter with the HATS community, and a letter from Concord can't hurt. I would say, though, in the letter from the HATS community, I think we should downplay the specific detriment to Concord or what makes Concord special. Because remember, we're talking to a governor who governs the whole state. And I don't know how well that's going to play with someone who's under a lot of pressure right now, especially from Western communities to think about them more. So I think maybe the letter from Concord, we can specific, we can address our specific Concord, what makes us special, what makes us deserving of not having planes fly over us. But I think when we're talking more regionally, we should be thinking more regionally and address it to a governor who's basically governing the whole state.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Linda. I think that's good feedback, Mary. And the processes, I understand it, and I think Terry has outlined, is that each of the communities is going to now give feedback to Doug, and he's going to produce a new draft. My understanding, and Terry can check me on this if necessary, that the conversation the other night with the HATS communities, there was general agreement about the contradiction of the state and all of our climate goals with this project. And there was agreement that I think everyone could come together on that. There was not necessarily agreement to come together on some of the other aspects. So it'll be interesting, Lexington was meeting tonight, Lincoln was meeting tonight. It'll be interesting to see the feedback that Doug gets in the next draft that he produces. But I suspect he's going to limit some of this. To your point, Mary, yeah.
One of the things that I read here, Terry, was that I think it's the third paragraph about how this contradicts Massport's master plan and the MAPC Metro comment and the achievement of zero greenhouse gas impacts by 2031. I think we learned from Neil Rasmussen that Massport only measures emissions from infrastructure and moving stock fleet. And they don't measure or they don't measure emissions from aircraft. So I'm pretty sure that's true. So that, you know, and
That was my understanding.
You know, that would come back and say, well, yes, we are meeting it because we're going to make our buildings more energy efficient, or we're going to have electric vehicles or whatever, and it's not our responsibility. So I'm just bringing that up about, I don't know how you want to think about that, but
You're looking at
Part of the response to the the environmental review, isn't it, that the information is incomplete, but that comes at a different phase of the of the argument.
Well, I think, I think what Mary's saying is that we need to wordsmith this a little differently because it's not Massport's mission to control greenhouse gas emissions of specific flights.
Exactly.
But I want to clarify something, Mary. There are two versions of this letter. So I think you are looking at version two. You said the third paragraph. This is the one that Doug wrote.
Yes.
Okay. So what I want to find out from this board tonight is two things. What I was really looking for were specific comments like the one Mary just made, so that we can get back to Doug. So so far, we've got that one specific comment. And I'm looking, I was hoping to get specific comments in writing before this meeting. If you have some other specific comments that you'd rather put in writing, we can do that, but either way, we can either discuss them or whatever, but I'm hoping that I can get back to Doug with some specifics. In other words, do you like Doug's version pretty much the way it is, except fixing that thing in the third paragraph that Mary just pointed out? Are there other things we need to fix?
Terry, this is not, this is not content, but in terms of this, who it goes to, the MT, the Mass God is there, but I didn't see Massport listed to get a CC on this letter.
That's such a good point. I think we should discuss that. I put them in, I took them out, I put them in. We're asking the governor to work, to take action with Massport. Do we want to give Massport a heads up that we're asking the governor this? Do we want to copy Massport, or we don't want to copy Massport? Could see it either way.
I don't have a strong feeling.
So is what you're saying, is you're asking members of the board to send their comments and suggestions this draft of the letter to the, to the author of the letter?
No, I would, I would like, I think, well, what they asked for was a consensus from each select board. So what does the Select Board think about this version of the letter? So for example, Henry, you mentioned that we include something about Concord's special assets. Then Marco Pine did that go maybe in a separate letter from Concord only. And Mary thought maybe we don't want to mention it at all. So I think we need to figure out as a board what we're doing with this kind of thing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. I don't know how so if we have different thoughts on specific features of the letter, I don't think we're going to be able to resolve that.
No, I don't either.
And so somebody, ultimately, somebody has to write the letter.
Right. I think over the short run, I'm largely happy with the, with the joint letter.
Me too.
As, as it stands, and you know, with the, I do think that it's you know, I would strengthen Mary's point about the, about the greenhouse gas emissions by saying, you know, further that it's sort of disingenuous for Massport to have goals that don't include or don't involve the, the actual
Planes?
Yeah, the actual planes. That's, that's similar to, let's call a large multinational fossil fuel companies also claiming that they've got, that they're making their sustainability calls.
Just give me that one more time. I got most of it down.
I just think it's disingenuous that, that Massport has goals that don't involve the direct consumption of fossil fuels by the fleets of, of planes that utilize their facilities. I think that it's one of those things where they've defined the goal so they can make it, not so that they can make progress.
Got it. Thank you.
However, you might want to phrase that would be
Phrase it like that. That was good.
I think I got it.
That was good.
But they're claiming that the number of flights will be smaller.
Well, that's a different But that's also addressed in the letter already, that there's no evidence or commitment to, to, to that aim, and I think that's appropriate as well.
Nobody's phrased in the way of essentially demanding assurances that
Yeah.
they will behave in a certain way, which is something we know is not enforceable once the facility is built.
Right. Yeah.
I'm generally happy with the letter, too.
So, Henry, I heard you objecting or wanting to to add some specific content, and I would presume in the Concord specific letter.
Yeah.
That, do you want to work with Terry on, on those?
If, if the board is happy with the letter essentially as written, you know, with the correction of small typographical errors and so on, if you want to make a motion to the effect that we authorize this to be
Authorized Terry as our representative to finalize the letter, working with the HATS.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
I think we are going to see a second draft after all the Select Boards weigh in, and the intention is that it comes back to each of the Select Boards.
Correct.
Then we need a motion. We just need direction to Terry that we generally
Okay, so, all right, so we're done with that?
Yep.
Nothing. Good. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Terry.
It's
That's good.
MBTA Quiet Zone Statement?
Yeah, sure, Mark. Is it, since we haven't voted, it's not too late?
Thank you very much. Again, Mark Ellis, 62 Prescott Road. So just two things quick. One is obviously, I just want to reemphasize the point that Mr. Dane made, that you know, once the facility, you know, is authorized and built, there's no control over, you know, how, how large the planes could be located there, the size of the hangars. There's no enforceability, as you said. I think that's really important thing to keep in, keep in mind, maybe especially in the for the impact on Concord per se with the flyovers and things in the letter from Concord. And separately, with regard to talking about Concord's assets, well, these Concord's assets are Massachusetts assets, they're national assets. They deal with, you know, people come here from all over the world, certainly from all over the country. So we shouldn't be too shy about talking about that, you know, it's, you know, somebody said, I want to put a heliport on top of the Washington Monument. I'm sure some people would would get upset. And I think this is not totally different from that with the historical park, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto the next?
Yep.
Is that the communications policy?
Well, there's something on the agenda about statement on the MBTA Quiet Zones.
What? MBTA Quiet Zone?
Oh, okay. Yes, the statement was, it was a request made that we write a letter in support to, to our legislators in support of the Quiet Zone, but and doing a little more digging into the situation, what turned out is the, the threat to the continuance of the Quiet Zone has nothing to do with the legislature. It has to do with a lawsuit that was brought by a retired engineer on the MBTA who had an unfortunate accident where a young child was killed while he was driving a train, who brought the suit against the MBTA and the Department of Public Utilities in order to re, to reactivate the federal requirements for for the use of whistles. And so that it turns out that it's a matter that is before the Superior Court, which is being defended by the MBTA and by the Department of Public Utilities. And they have both filed motions to dismiss the lawsuit. And it's actually, it seemed to me is inappropriate for us to ask legislatures to intervene in a matter that is under litigation and where the battle is being fought in the, in the courts. And so I think we can say that we sympathize with the, the concerns, but it is something that is will probably be resolved without our assistance. And so that I think we could pass on to the the communications policy.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
By the way, Chris did a nice job of writing a letter, too, and I had to talk with him about it. But it turns out that it was something else needed to be done.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Last thing, update Select Board Correspondence Policy.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for that, Henry. The Quiet Something.
So well, what I am trying to do is to adopt policies that will streamline our operations. And one of the most important things has been to try to get agendas and packages out at least a week before the meetings, which has been which is, which is not as easy as it may seem. But I haven't given up yet because I really think it's important to kind of make our jobs more kind of you know, make our work more intelligent and better informed, and also to have everybody have a chance to digest materials that are in the packages. And so one of the problems is the sense that under the old pack, under the old policy, we had to include every single letter that came in, even, even on Friday afternoon, which was just, it held up. It held up the whole process. I make it clear in this revised policy that everything that comes in is a matter of public record and that that a matter of public record and that that we need to really be able to exercise discretion as a board, not as to what is made public, but to what goes in as part of our meeting package. Because there's, you know, things should only go in the meeting package if they're helpful in our deliberations of the matters that we're considering or things that we're likely to consider soon. And I don't see how that should be governed by whatever the email happens to bring in on that week or that day. So I think this just makes it clear that we can be more efficient about what we do and what we, what we put before the board.
Was there an existing written policy that said that all correspondence was going to be included in the packet? That's what's in there?
I'm sorry that it didn't get, you know, when I originally sent the materials for inclusion in the package, I had a copy of the old policy, but it didn't get into the package.
Is it?
It doesn't, but
Yeah. That was part of what was written in there.
Here. It's, but it's two pages long.
Yeah, okay. So
And it has all kinds of requirements. My original idea, my original idea was to say, set up something on the town website and just put everything on it that comes in, make it all public. And therefore, we don't have any, don't exercise any editorial control over what gets published, so we're not responsible for it, no matter how awful it is. And after having a conversation with Nina, I realized that that, that since that's such a, such a totally open policy would be subject to abuse that we would have no control over, I changed my mind to something where we could exercise our discretion as to, not as to what was public, but as to what we put in our meeting package.
So everything will be public still?
No, it wouldn't, no. That was, that was what, that's what I abandoned.
Okay.
But as a matter of the open meeting law, everything that comes in is a public record.
But it won't be published.
It won't be published.
Got it. So it's available, but not posted online?
Not, well, it never has been, except as part of our package.
Okay.
And it doesn't seem sensible for us to just include in our kind of our materials for conducting our meetings, that just anything that comes in the mail goes into that package.
Impact on staff?
Tanya?
Sorry.
I'm sure you We're not done.
Oh, we're not done? Oh, I saw it.
I just, I just asked, I just asked the question of the town manager, what the impact on staff was of the change of policy.
Yeah. And, and I would defer to Shannon just to, to respond. Yeah, I mean, it definitely helps with publishing the packet, so. And I too would like to work on getting that process nailed down. So one more thing to help us, I think.
If, I guess the subsequent question is, if we start to get public records requests that ask for all the correspondence that came in for a given meeting as a result of not publishing?
You never know. I mean, we get those requests anyway for any kind of reason. Um, I, I don't think that not putting things in our meeting packages is going to lead to any increase in public records requests. Because most people who send us letters really want to influence what we're doing.
Hmm.
And so they, the best way for them to influence what we're doing is to send us something that seems to us to be reasonable to put in our, our papers because it makes a sensible argument that is relative, relevant to what we're discussing. So it's actually, so, so I don't think it leads to the kinds of things we've had. Um, I mean, and I would say that the public records requests that we get, except for one particular person, uh, seem to have no basis, you know, are unpredictable.
Hmm.
So, but we can find out, can't we? Because one thing about a policy is you can change it.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work.
So the, the thinking would be that we would still include some correspondence in the package that we thought was directly relevant.
Yeah. And that's what the policy says. It is relevant to, that, uh, there, it says, uh, the inclusion of correspondence received in time for inclusion will be at the discretion of the board based on its relevance to matters currently before the board are likely to be considered in the near future.
Yeah, the thing I find a little tricky about that is that it suggests that the board is deciding what's relevant in, in advance of a meeting, which almost begins to sound like a deliberation to me.
Well.
I'm just.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it's not really to decide. Yeah, I, I mean, the point is that actually.
It would be the chair.
See, I don't see that as being a decision about it.
It, it would be the chair. It wouldn't be a deliberation.
Okay. Yeah. So, and that, so the policy does say at the discretion of the board.
Right. Well, I wanted to make it.
Yeah.
If some, see, well, actually what happens is correspondence comes in. It gets forwarded to the members of the board, right? Anyway.
Right.
So all the members of the board see it. And it may be that you see something that comes to you, say, this is important, let's put it in the package.
Okay.
Okay, then, then I'll say, no, Mark, sorry, forget it.
That sounds likely.
In the prior policy, um, they were, in the prior policy was addressing people if they missed the deadline, right? And it said, the select board chair will acknowledge any other letters received when there's been an opportunity to publish them. Could we add something where we at least acknowledge the letters?
That, that.
Even though we don't include them in the packet?
I don't think that, you know, that makes the, that makes the job almost impossible when we get like a hundred and fifty letters about the six fifteen Lowell Road or two hundred emails about the middle school financing.
But that's all you'd have to say.
What?
That we received two hundred letters about the middle school.
Oh, I, I thought you mean by acknowledging you sending something back to each person.
No, no, no. I think what, what, I think what used to be done is that the chair would acknowledge that we received a hundred and twenty letters from um, people that were in support of X or against Y or, and, and it was just be a.
I'd like to make it, um.
But at least you're letting people know what we received. Even though we're not including them in the packet. The, the, the thing is, I think the central question here is how much are we going to let the public know what we're receiving? Right? And they're public records, so people can always go and get public records. But there should be some, I think I'd feel better if there was some acknowledgement, um, at the board meeting of what we've heard from people up to tonight.
What do you think?
Well, I'm comfortable with the notion that there's a deadline to be included in the packet. It's published, and if you make the deadline, it's included in the packet. And if you don't make the deadline, then it's not included in the packet, although it might later be, or, or it's still a public record and, and is available because then it's fairly simple to say, you know, two business days or three business days before, whatever. I think people tend to write to us in response to what appears on the agenda and therefore in the packet. And so there's a natural tendency for us to want to publish a packet. And then the letters start coming in about what's in it, which is helpful often.
The, the, the sequence.
This wouldn't allow that.
This would not allow that.
The sequence needs to be, and this is, I'm trying to, uh, actually make into a kind of a, a, a schedule, is that the packet, that the agenda itself.
Hmm.
We, um, Carrie and I are meeting with the staff tomorrow, uh, tomorrow to discuss the agenda for our next meeting on July tenth. Uh, I would like to see that agenda go out before the end of this week for the meeting that is two weeks from now. And I would like to see the package go out early following week so that the whole package is out to the public and to the board almost a week before the meeting instead of being on the Friday before the meeting.
Right, but as.
Driving for. So that deadline, a, a deadline would have to be, you know, the Monday before the meeting. If you want to have a deadline and have that work.
But I think Mark's point is well taken. It's that that's when you get most of the letters.
No, not if the agenda went out the week before. The package, I'm talking about the package being.
Oh, so the agenda goes out a week before the packet?
Yeah.
So you have got a whole week to write your letter?
Almost a whole week. It's, so go, maybe go out Wednesday and the packet goes out the following Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday. So there'd be several, there'd be four or five days between the agenda going out and the packet.
Okay, I misunderstood.
And if we only accomplish some, but I also don't, but I mean, we do need to have some change of that policy to, in order to make that timing work, which I think is important for the board. Now, if you still want to have anything you want to, I still don't see the utility of having anything that comes in be put in our meeting packet.
Hmm.
I really don't. And I don't, doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
So that's why, that's the basis of this policy.
So I think what we were saying is we want to change it to be at the discretion of the chair of the board or, or their designee, right?
Okay, that's alright.
And, and we, we don't want to consider the, um, but the chair would recognize things that came in after. You don't want to do that?
That just makes more work for me.
Well.
And I have. And one thing I don't need is more work.
You, okay, I'm done.
I'm ready to hear comments.
Hmm?
I'm ready to hear comments on this.
Comments. I know, Tanya, I know you'll love this.
No, no, I do. I do like it. No, I actually, I'll make.
And you know, I want to say that, I see, when we're here sitting in person, face to face,
Yeah.
we can have, we can talk like this to each other.
Oh, yeah.
Which is just, it's not really, can happen when you're a little vignette on the screen up in the corner.
A little vignette on the screen.
Why, why? I'm sorry?
I'm just saying, you know, this is good.
Thank you. Thank you. No, no, I actually like the simplicity. So, um, I totally like that. I just want to observe that sometimes people have things that they want to write after they see the packet because there is some detail in that, that they might want to address. But again, as long as you get the letter, that's, I, I like the simplicity. Um, uh, the only, uh, other than the fact that it needs to be the chair or the clerk rather than the board, which already was mentioned. Um, and I would say that you would need to be extra careful that you, you try to include letters from different points of view and that, you know, so that it doesn't become an issue.
Because I'm going to say this to you, although I'm not even supposed to respond to public comment.
No, it's okay.
One of the, it was a recent letter we got, which was totally at odds with my view of a situation, but I thought it was interesting and I wanted to include, wanted to include it. And sometimes things are, the things that are most interesting and most useful are the things that disagree strongly with your, your own opinions.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It should not be based on the content.
Right.
It should be, it should be based on the, the thought.
Right. And I also like Mary's comments about acknowledging nevertheless, you know, just mentioning what letters there were and what they were about.
Good. Okay, thank you. Diane? Okay.
Diane?
Diane?
Hi, thank you so much. What an interesting discussion. I, I'm a little concerned, uh, that and, and I totally understand the need to streamline things, and I appreciate that, Henry, very much. Of course, the responsibilities we take on as public servants are, are heavy, aren't they? They're, they're often burdensome. Um, but what I would like to say is that I, I think we need to be careful that we don't find ourselves, you don't find yourselves in a position where you're censoring what gets presented. Um, it's hard enough to find for many people, uh, just the, the documents for a meeting of the select board. Um, I can't tell you the number of people, and I'm sometimes among them, who can't figure out where they are on the website. Add that to the fact that it's not necessarily easy for, for people to find these letters. Um, if they're not made readily available in some site. So I would urge you to think about a collection spot where the letters can be made available to the public and easily accessed by anybody who wants to read them. That doesn't mean they have to all be presented in the packet. Um, but then that allows you to make a summary, but it assures you that you're not in trouble in terms of being accused of prejudice or kind of forwarding some points of view and not forwarding others. And one other comment, if I could, there's been some derivative comments made about being online rather than in person. And for many of us, that's not always possible. And I hope that we can continue to respect uh, the hybrid abilities, uh, because it's made poss, it's made it possible for many people to participate who might otherwise not be able to do so. And I think that's part of the, the overall healthy communication in the town. Thank you.
That's, thank you. Okay, what do you want to do?
I'm willing to give this a try. I have reservations, but, uh, like, let's give it a try.
Okay.
That's my.
Your second?
Trouble. So I'm.
You're gonna try without a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we give it a try.
Okay. Mark, you're the, you're the second.
I'm the designated second of this evening. Okay, I will, I will second.
Actually, for the record, the motion is to move to approve the proposed amended select board correspondence policy as included in the select board meeting packet.
Could we say, could we say on a pilot basis?
Right. And, and, and can we, um, put it on the agenda again in three to six months and you know, talk about for five minutes, is it working or not working? Because I think, you know, I think Mark and Diane.
Harry, why don't you just remind us in six months to bring it up?
All right. Because I think Mark and Diane made some good points. And if, if it's not working, uh, maybe we'll go back to, to, um, the way they suggested. So.
Or some other, good, alright.
Okay, so the, the.
But I also want to add that the fact that I omitted the word on that needs to be inserted after, uh, the discretion of the board based on its.
Chair of the board or, or their designee. So, okay, so wait. Move to approve the proposed amended, amended select board correspondence policy as included in the select board meeting packet with the changes discussed um, on a temporary basis.
To be reviewed in a few months. Yeah.
A few months.
Right.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay. I think that gets us to the, oh, do we get to the end of the, uh, the agenda? Well, um, so I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Aye.
Definitely, of course.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.